Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, welcome. I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente. It is Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, 6:00 P.M. We're here in the City Hall Council Chambers. And who would like to lead us in the pledge? Any volunteers? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Prescott Loeffler.
Please join me in honoring our country flag.
I.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call. All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Davis. Item four, Special Order of Business or Special Presentation, and there are none tonight. So item five is our minutes from our July 24th meeting. It was a special meeting, and those minutes are in our packet. Did anybody have any questions or changes?
Did we get, and then we. That's because the other ones were.
Yeah, we. So that pertains to the next, to the Hotel Clemente Agenda Item, not to the minutes? Although, are they the same date?
Well, it happens to be the same minutes.
Just happens to be the same minutes. Yeah, okay. Anyway, on the meeting of the 24th, those minutes, any questions, comments, corrections, motions would be in order.
I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner McCann and seconded by Commissioner Crandall for approval of the July 24th special meeting minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Absent.
Let's mark Vice Chair McCacken as an abstention for that vote. Item six is oral or written communications. It's an opportunity for any member of the audience that wishes to address the Planning Commission on any item not on the agenda tonight. This is their opportunity to bring up any other item that they want.
Chair, real fast, I think there was another set of minutes to approve.
I don't have that in the agenda.
Well, the one they passed out is for June 26th, the special meeting of June 26th.
Because that's the attachment three that's wrong on the staff report.
Nope. This is what's in my packet. I'm just following on the playbook.
Okay, so there was a James Pitt.
Yes.
Let, I don't have those minutes in my packet, so let's bring those at the next meeting, please, if we could. Yeah, great. Jonathan, you okay with that?
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, just a little housekeeping, we're moving along, back to oral communications. Anyone from the audience want to speak on a non-Agenda item? You, sir. Okay. Do you have a blue card, if you want to bring that up? Okay, for oral communications. Are we okay? Okay. Brian, is it Pratt? Pratt?
I'm sorry, we can't.
P.I.T., gotcha.
But as long as you don't call me Brad, I'm okay with it.
All right, sorry, Brian. Brian, Brian Pitt.
I get the Brad pit quite a bit, so. So I'm just trying to, I didn't think I'd get an opportunity this quickly, but I'm just.
Take a minute to get yourself organized, that's okay.
And should we restart the clock when he?
One visual, I'm just trying to locate. Okay, I think I've got it.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
Sure.
Yeah.
Planning Commission, thank you for seeing me today. I've met with Jonathan in the past, he's the only one I've met with here, but I appreciate the time. I'm a resident here in Toledo. My family purchased a property, raw piece of dirt across from the pier, at 614 Avenue at Victoria back in 2008. We went through eight years to develop the property, and we followed all the codes that were required. There were a lot of lawsuits trying to prevent the build-out of a multi-level property, but we were able to do that over the span of eight years, and a lot of money spent. We've had a very difficult situation as a family and the city as well. A lot of residents in the city have been affected by some things at our property. I first want to just show everybody, this is the property. It's directly across from the pier. This was developed by Michael Luna. It's a beautiful piece of property, and we had a public benefit courtyard that was part of the build-out. It was part of our conditional use permit in order to develop the property. It was to have an open courtyard as a public benefit to the City of San Clemente, the patrons, the citizens, a beach-serving benefit to the people of the San Clemente community. An open courtyard at all times. Over the span of years, the councils changed, employees have changed, and it was a new development, so I do understand that maybe not everybody in administrative knew about the rules of this property, the developmental approved rules by the City Council. This is now what the front of our residential property looks like. There's a city parklet on the street serving alcohol, there is a, there are restaurant seatings on the public sidewalk, there is a public courtyard with a permitted fence that I believe 100% should not have been permitted, and we've got a tenant by the business name of Catarinas that has created a lot of issues for locals. You can read about it all over the San Clemente Life website, as well as Yelp, with over 300-plus one-star reviews of people being asked to leave the courtyard, accosted. I'm going to go ahead and disclose, not that this is about me, but I was arrested on that courtyard, a public benefit courtyard as a property manager and the son of the owner by these people, and sent to jail on a private party arrest. But regardless of that, there's a public hearing coming up for a zoning change requested by these tenants, which my family does not want to be approved. Not only that, it's been operating for five years outside of the compliance of the codes that were issued when we built the property. Most importantly, a takeout restaurant with the requirement of 800 square feet. To have a sit-down restaurant, which is what's been operating for quite some time, you have to have 1,000 square feet of gross floor plan, which we do not have. Michael Luna and I have met recently, and he's attested that this building is out of compliance. So I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that we are here to hope, and I've met with council last night, also presented, I will be at zoning tomorrow at 3:00. We do not want this zoning of our property changed by a tenant request, especially after all the problems they've created for the citizens of San Clemente when we built this property for the benefit of that courtyard.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention tonight, Mr. Pitt. Thank you.
I'm sorry for the intensity, it is a little triggering for me, so.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Well, we appreciate you making the trip out and letting us know about this, and you indicated you'd already talked to Jonathan about it, so that's.
Yeah, I'm hoping he'll do the right thing.
Is there any other public comment tonight? All right, that concludes then item number six. Number seven is consent calendar, we have none tonight, so that takes us to item eight. We have three public hearings. The first one is a continued public hearing, item number A, of Sunset Shores Facade Remodel, and it's a permit amendment at 410 Corto Lane. Did we, Jonathan, do we want to discuss this item?
I don't have a presentation. I'm happy to give a quick overview as to the request for continuation.
Yeah, because, yes, so staff has recommended we continue this open public hearing, it stays open, and if you just want to give us the thumbnail, and then we'll take a motion on continuance.
Certainly. Okay, so item A on the agenda is for a request related to modifications to a facade of a property near Casa Romantica. This project was initially approved by the zoning administrator. The applicant later requested an amendment to remove one of the conditions of that original approval. The Planning Commission opened a public hearing on that item, gave some direction related to that item, and the architect is still working on that, on the modifications and the direction that was given by Planning Commission, and they were not ready to proceed at this meeting. I do have one modification from staff's recommendation. It is likely that we will be canceling the September 18th Planning Commission meeting, so I'm going to amend the recommendation to continue the item to the first meeting of October, which would be October 2nd.
Got it, okay. Are there any comments or questions of Mr. Lightfoot? Someone want to make a motion? October 2nd?
Correct.
Got it.
I'll make a motion to continue October 2nd.
Second. October 2nd.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Chair McCacken and seconded by Commissioner Scott McCann. Any discussion on continuing this to the 2nd?
I will just make the, make a note, I will be out of town on the 2nd.
Okay. All those in favor of continuing this item to October 2nd?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, it unanimously passes to continue to October 2nd. All right, thanks, Jonathan, and we appreciate you guys continuing to work on that.
Hmm? Want to get the other continuants out of the way?
No, I don't want to take them out of order, we'll just.
Well, if there's anybody waiting.
No, there won't be.
Okay.
Let me just confirm with the audience, is anybody here for item 8C, the north beach? No, okay. Okay, so that takes us to item 8B, and this is also another continued public hearing, and it's for a project 23-626 Hotel Clemente and Loretta's Restaurant at 225-229 Avenue de Delmar and 232-234 Avenue de Granada, and the applicant is seeking a request or submitting a request to consider, for consideration of a cultural heritage permit, CHP 23263, for the rehabilitation and adaptive reuse of historic resource and development permit, DP 24-258, for the demolition of a duplex at 232 Avenue de Granada, and the construction of two new buildings to establish a 28-room boutique hotel rooftop lounge and specialty restaurant with indoor and outdoor seating. So this is a continuation of a public hearing. I want to ask my colleagues, does anybody have any disclosures or ex parte communication they want to disclose? I have such. On Monday, July 1st, I responded to a request from the applicant to meet, and I did on the 20, on Monday the 1st, with the architect, Michael Luna, and applicant Mike Sims. It was a follow-up to our meeting, and they had a lot of questions about the public comment that they heard, and we discussed those comments, deliveries, noise, parking. So my role there was essentially reinforcing what I heard the public say, and that was it. And I felt it was productive, at least to reinforce the public comments. Is there any other ex parte communications? Okay, I will indicate that a number of members of the public have written us. We've, I've read all those communications, some of them are in the back if someone wants to look at those, but we did, I want to acknowledge, we got a lot of emails on this matter. Okay, with that, we do have an updated staff report. There has been work by the staff and the applicant, so those changes are going to be presented now by our staff planner, John Camper. John?
Thank you, Chair Cosgrove, Planning Commission. Just before I began, I just want to make note that the attachment for the minutes from the previous meeting were, that were included were incorrect, so they've been printed out a hard copy of those, the correct minutes.
Yeah, just for everyone's reference, there was in your staff report a attachment, and it was of those minutes, and we just got the wrong one in our packet, so the new, the correct one was redistributed.
Yes, sir.
Which happened to also be in our packet, just under the minutes tab, so we've seen it.
Perfect. So with that, yes, I will be giving the presentation for the Hotel Clemente and Loretta's Restaurant Project, contract planner, John Champa. Just to give you a quick overview of the project that was presented in June is that it is for a 28-room hotel that is inclusive of a basement, meeting room, and storage area, as well as a roof deck. There would also be a restaurant with 130 seats, of which 32 are outdoors, and would also include full-range alcohol, amplified music for indoors and outdoors. The project would be providing 36 parking spaces, as well as a rehabilitation of the historic resource, the Antoinette Building, that would be annexed into the project, as well as an increased height request for the elevator towers, as well as architectural projections to the project. The architectural review and components of those projects were discussed, and the project was continued specifically related to key issues related to parking and noise, as well as deliveries and some other elements that would be included in the presentation, so the architectural analysis will not be included in the presentation, however, staffs and our applicant are available for that. So with that, I'll go over the review process, the public portion of the review process, and that it first went to design review back in February 28th of this year, then it went back to design review with modifications and additional information on March 27th of this year, and then, as stated. March 27th of this year, and then, as stated, in June 26th was the first time the planning commission reviewed the project in which they continued it, and the public had an opportunity to speak. So today, we were at our fourth public meeting on this and second public hearing. So public comments from the June meeting were both for the project in support, as well as raised concerns related to the project. So just quickly touching on the concerns and support. With the concerns, there were issues and concerns related to outdoor amplified noise, as well as noise related in operations with the lifts, the accuracy of the parking study, as well as the location and timing of deliveries, potential historic resource impacts, sizing of the project in terms of height, and the use of the basement area. There were also comments in support of the project related to improvement to the downtown, the city's in need of a hotel, the high-quality architecture, as well as experienced operator, and then just additional benefits that the project would bring to the downtown. At the meeting, the planning commission also did provide staff with direction based on their review, as well as public input, which were related to evaluating the parking study to ensure that the outdoor seating was assessed, providing a condition of approval that requires the applicant to address parking issues if they do arise on site, clarifying the use and intent of the business space, or I'm sorry, basement space of the hotel, and incorporating a condition of approval with restrictions related to delivery trucks on, along Avenida Granada, and providing additional information on the vehicle lifts and their noise generated, as well as incorporated a fountain or some other sound masking element to mask the noise generated from the operations of the project, and then incorporating an amplified noise system to cap the decibel level for, for the music system outdoors to ensure compliance with the city's noise ordinance. So the modifications that were incorporated into the draft resolution have been updated, and those updates and modifications are reflective in the red text. There's also some, some strikeouts that are incorporated into there, just so, just a quick read in terms of the changes that have occurred, that's where you will see them. So with that, I'll transition to the parking study and approaches with the project. First here, we have a table, this is just the first two columns of the parking table one that's, that's located within the parking study. And so the column to the left is just a basic breakdown of the project in terms of 28 rooms. We've got 114 seats, or a total of 130 seats, 114 would be counted towards the overall parking demand, and 16 seats would be eligible for the parking waivers. And then this first column that you see on the right is representative of the city's parking standards for the two uses, one being the hotel and two being the restaurant. So the hotel is based on the number of rooms, resulting in 33 spaces, as well as the restaurant, which is based on seating count of 23 spaces, also accounting for the outdoor seating waivers. So the review of the project, just strictly based on the parking regulations for the zoning ordinance, would result in 56 parking spaces. Now, in transitioning over to the parking study, one of the components of the parking study was to evaluate the parking demand based on the Urban Land Institute parking analysis. So one point to mention here is the city zoning ordinance allows for the required parking for a hotel to be assessed with reductions based on a parking study, and so that's what the applicant's prepared. One of those parking studies evaluations is this analysis of the ULI shared parking estimate. So that establishes a parking demand based on the type of use, potential trips generated to assess what the necessary parking demand should be for that. So that has been completed for both the hotel, as well as the restaurant, as well as incorporated in reductions based on the operations of the facility, as well as other key components, downtown multimodal element and shared parking component for reductions that have been incorporated into that. So that is, in this table, is reflective of 35 parking spaces, however, with the updated addendum to the parking study that was provided to you as attachment to your application, that assessment of the outdoor parking did result in additional parking space incorporated into that demand, so that 35 parking spaces has been increased to 36 parking spaces for the overall parking assessment. And lastly, there was an evaluation of a similar project in a similar beach community to assess what is the parking demand for that and what it was approved at, to assess is this a real numbers that we're seeing in terms of the ULI parking assessment that was incorporated in here. And this project is the Shade Hotel in Manhattan Beach, was approved with 30 parking spaces. And here you can see 17 spaces for the hotel component, as well as 23 spaces for the restaurant with some reductions incorporated in, resulting in a total parking demand and supply provided at 30 spaces. The city's parking consultant, who peer-reviewed the applicant's parking study of both of the, or all of these components, is also available to dive deeper into the data and the analysis and the justification for the reductions. However, just it's important to say that in staff's and the third-party, or the city's parking consultant's review of the parking study did result in several iterations and additional information and justification to have the parking study and addendum that's before you today. So just a quick glance in terms of the ULI methodology that I was identifying before. Again, it begins with essentially standalone parking rates based on the specific uses that are proposed and what the appropriate parking demand would be for associated with those. And then other components are evaluated that may allow for additional reductions in the parking demand due to things like the downtime multimodal adjustment, as well as potential duplicate customers, where if you have the hotel guests that are also utilizing the restaurant, that would result in a net reduction in the parking. So resulting in overall reductions there, and in addition to just an overall overlap in the different peak demands of the two uses, in that the peak demand and use for parking for the hotel is going to be more in the, more in the morning, late morning, afternoon, whereas the restaurant will be in the evening. So there's fluctuation of all those key components that result in the parking demand that's been assessed with the ULI methodology. So just in quick comparison to the Shade Hotel project that again is in Manhattan Beach, as you can see, both are beach communities located, and projects are in the downtown. Here, we've got both projects are located within less than half a mile to the beach and pier, and, you know, similar sized and projects, you know, two-story hotel and restaurant, boutique hotels with a restaurant component, as well as a roof deck. And, you know, just give context for the indoor seating areas of the two that are both very similar, and 128 seats for the Shade Hotel and 130 proposed for the restaurant, for the Loretta's Restaurant. And then here, we've got a comparison of all of the, just the key kind of data points for the two hotels, in that the guest rooms for the Shade Hotel is 38, whereas the project is proposing 28. Again, the restaurants are almost identical. Dedicated parking to the hotel for the Shade is 30, whereas this project is proposing 36. Both have valet, both are located in downtown and half a mile or less from the beach. There is also public parking adjacent to both of these hotels, as well as summer trolleys, however, the city of San Clemente has a trolley operating year-round on the weekends, both in close proximity to the beach as well, and the city of San Clemente has about doubled the population. So that's just a quick snapshot in terms of comparables and, and real-world numbers that the Shade Hotel project did propose. In addition to the Shade Hotel comparisons, parking counts were conducted on-site to evaluate what is the true numbers in terms of customers that are coming and going, or guests, and those were counted at the valet parking location. So, as well as looked at self-parking, and customers coming, as well as utilization of alternative methods, including ride share, as well as public parking. So the counts that did occur on, it was, first was weekday, Wednesday, 16 guests drove and 17 utilized alternative modes of transportation, whereas on Saturday, 28 drove and 49 used alternative modes of transportation. So the assessment of the hotel on Saturday was based on 100% occupancy. So another issue, question that came up at the last hearing was about the staffing for the hotel and the restaurant, and as previously stated, the, the peak are, occur at, peak utilization for each, the restaurant and the hotel occur at different times. So in the mornings will be the peak for the hotel, which will have the majority of their staff, and in the afternoons will be the restaurant peak. So the employees proposed by the applicant that would be operating the facility range from 6 to 12, depending on that demand, and so here we have the evening demand, which would be the highest utilization for staff, got one onsite manager that would be covering both the restaurant and the hotel, two valet, one host front desk, one bussler-runner, one bartender, three servers, and three cooks. So in conclusion, staff, the evaluation of the parking study for the proposed reduction in the parking demand, which is required of a conditional use permit, is in compliance with industry standards for parking study that's proposed. Again, the city had its parking consultant peer-review the study and confirm that it, all the necessary information and appropriate analysis was conducted. In addition to that, as part of the project, the closure of a driveway along the Del Mar frontage would result in at least one additional parking space being provided as a result of the project, but again, it would be a public parking space. The analysis of the Shade Hotel is a, is a good quality example of a comparison site in terms of restaurant size and hotel operation to use in terms of comparable numbers and parking demand, as well as just, at the public hearing from, from June 26th, the planning commission, as well as members of the public, raised concerns related to the overall parking demand and some of the reductions that were proposed as a result of that. So with that, there are some modifications proposed and updated conditions of approval that have been incorporated into this project. So most notably is that the restaurant seating is being proposed to be reduced from 130 to 100, as, and a condition of approval 4.15 has been added to the project to allow for the seating to be increased up to the 130 that were originally proposed. If one of, one of these two conditions are implemented by the applicant, which is the payment of $1,040 for a monthly multimodal fee that would be paid by the applicant to the city, which would aid in multimodal opportunities for the city, most notably being the city's trolley service, which would allow for potentially expanded hours of operation to increase the usability in the downtown area. In addition, conditions of approval 7.1.2 have been, there's been some modifications to that to ensure that the project adheres to all of the key measures for the parking, traffic study, as well as the parking operations plan, to ensure that there are no issues in terms of queuing or otherwise associated with the site, where vehicles may be queuing onto the street, as well as if there are issues that do arise with the project. Condition 7.13 has been added that the applicant is required to address those, and a potential amendment may be required. Additional feedback from the planning commission from the last meeting was related to the valet, and so there were concerns that if there was a valet fee, it could be discourage the use of the valet and result on guests to park at the free public parking adjacent to the site. So the project has been conditioned to require free valet for all users of the restaurant to, to ensure free use of that valet service. In addition to that, noise was another healthy discussion by the public, as well as the planning commission, and so additional information was provided by the applicant regarding the vehicle lifts, and so condition 5.1.2 has been added to ensure that the vehicle lifts are operating within their noise decibel levels, and if there are issues associated with it, then those have to be addressed, which the applicant has indicated that there are measures that can be added or modified to the, to the lifts to further dampen the noise, but as, as the manufacturer specifications, it is in compliance with the noise ordinance. In addition to that, condition 4.5 has been added to add noise dampening to the walls of the garage to further dampen the operations and valet service within the garage building. As previously stated, noise masking has been conditioned to the project with condition approval 4.6, that a fountain or other sound dampening measures subject to the, the city planner being incorporated into the project along the Granada frontage to be implemented to reduce those, those noise impacts where they're likely to be potentially experienced. Sound amplification system is conditioned under 5.1.2, that a noise monitoring system be installed for the outdoor noise area, so that would be the roof deck, as well as on the courtyard, with a decibel limiter that would essentially cap the, how loud the, the noise system can get to ensure compliance. And then, as part of all these noise conditions, there's condition 5.1.1, that there's a final inspection prior to certificate of occupancy, to ensure that the operations and all of the key components have been tested and ensure that there is compliance with the noise ordinance related to the vehicle lifts and outdoor speakers. Deliveries was also another discussion item at the last hearing, and so staff has discussed this with the applicant. The applicant is agreeable to the conditions proposed here, which is 7.1.8, to require that any deliveries along Granada would be to occur on-site, so those would all be likely the, you know, the delivery vans that are approximately 24 feet in length. There's to be no semi-trailer trucks parking along Avenida Granada that would obstruct the street or any access by any means. And so in addition to that, 7.1.9 has been added to the project to condition any deliveries on Del Mar to occur from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and if there's occurrences where a larger vehicle is needed for those deliveries. However, any of these deliveries are going to need to adhere to the noise ordinance. So that is a, an overarching regulatory element here for all of these conditions in the operations of the facility. The basement use question did come up in terms of how that is being used, and so in discussions with the applicant, this is intended to be used for hotel meeting space. There might be occasional instances where food's served, and so that food service would be conducted there, however, it's not intended to be an overflow service for the restaurant. And if there are any private events where this area is reserved, then the amount of seating that's needed for that basement area is to be reduced in the restaurant, so that there's the same number of seating that's incorporated into the project to ensure that there's not an increase in, in the parking demand for the project. So with that, staff is also recommending the project be categorically exempt due to the evaluation that the project is in compliance with the Secretary of Interior standards for that Class 31 exemption, as well as a Class 32 infill development exemption project, all subject to the conditions of approval that incorporated into the project. And with that, all of the conditions of approval that staff has discussed, the applicant is in agreeance on, has been, those have been shared in advance of this public hearing. So staff and, and the city's parking consultant are available for any questions you may have as we proceed. as we proceed.
All right, John. Thank you for presenting all the updates that have occurred since our last public hearing. And here's what we're going to do. I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have some questions of John, and then the applicant gets 10 minutes to make their presentation. And then I'm going to, after that, call on members of the public that wish to speak. I have about nine speakers that have indicated they'd like to speak. If anyone hasn't turned in their card, now's, you know, the next couple of minutes will be a good time to do that. Okay. And it sounds like the AC might be back on. That's, that's good. Great. Okay. Any questions of John? Commissioner Prescott-Loffler?
John, thank you for a comprehensive report. I have a few questions. I'm just going to rattle them off, and then you can just address them. Is there, I didn't see in the study here, is there a music curfew?
Yes, so there's hours specified in interior and exterior. All exterior noise is to be ending at 10:00 PM, as well as interior is 12:00 PM.
The valet park.
Good night. Sorry.
Thank you. Valet parking. Where would they park? Would they park on Granada? Where are they going to park the cars?
So, all the vehicles will be parked onsite. There's 36 spaces. So, there's vehicle lifts, valet, yes.
Valet, that's very interesting. So, when they, when the valet takes the car away from the property, where, they just park anywhere away from the property, or are they parking the car on the property?
On the property.
Thank you. And then, the six to 12 employees, I was following the ULI evaluation, and do they also use those parking spaces that are on property?
Yes. So, the parking spaces would be, are assessed, the parking demand is assessing the demands of the uses, which are inclusive of the employees.
Okay, thank you.
That's it?
Okay, Scott, you're good. You're good. Any questions of John? Okay, Commissioner Crandall's got a question for you, John.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I'm probably going to, I've got enough questions for John that, let's let applicant go again. And I want to make sure we have access to John during, for discussions.
Okay. Oh, yeah, he's not going anywhere. All right. Okay, with that, I'm going to call on the applicant if they wish to address Mr. Sims. And I see you brought Mr. Luna as well, but please, you've got, yeah, 10 minutes for your presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, planning commissioners and staff, for all the hard work over the last couple of months, and also allowing us to present our project again this evening. Mike Sims, the owner, developer, and operator of this project. I think that's one of the unique situations we bring to this, is that everything we, we, we agreed to tonight is going to be held on me to, to operate appropriately. I also want to thank the public for sharing their insights into our project, both in favor and those that had concerns. We met with the public at open meetings during, before our last hearing. We also met with the public at our booth during the music festival a couple of weekends ago. We listened, and we feel we have included conditions that will mitigate the concerns raised as much as possible since our last meeting. The staff has done a great job presenting those items tonight. I wanted to reiterate that smooth neighborhood operations are in the best interest of not only our neighbors, but also the guests that live on the property every night. So, if we don't operate properly, we get bad reviews, it's a financial hit to us as well. So, making too much noise, or, you know, causing backups or anything of that nature are not in our best interest. In respect to the phrase "trust but verify", which I've heard, we support the conditions that staff have drafted that ensure we operate the hotel and restaurant as we promise. And those conditions specifically, namely, would be 7.1 and 7.1, I'm sorry, 7.12 and 7.13, that do say that if, for some reason, our plan that we presented does not happen, we work with traffic engineers and staff to mitigate those issues. And if not, then our, there's a potential for our business to be encumbered. So, we're here to promise what we're going to do, and we're here to agree that if it doesn't happen, we'll, 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 we'll make it right. So, with that, we are available for any questions. We do have my partners and our associates here, architect Michael Luna, parking engineer, and, yeah, so thank you very much.
Okay, let me see who's got questions for you.
Okay.
All right. We'll start down here with Commissioner Prescott. No questions, Scott, Steve, Gary, Bart, for the applicant.
I.
There you go. You're off again.
I do have questions for the parking engineer.
Okay. Do you mind having him come up?
Tricia.
John, can you bring up that parking calculations with three green panels or two green panels?
Keep.
I just want to make sure that in these parking studies, checkout time is 11 o'clock or somewhere around there. Check-in time is somewhere around three or four. Did you take into consideration people who might want to stay around at the hotel even though they've checked out?
Yes.
And how many? And how does that work into the calculations? Because it's not addressed in any of the documents we have.
So, base, the hourly profile of the parking demand that we ended up applying to the parking study is based on ULI as well. And we consider ULI as our main source of information for that kind of temporal distribution, if I, if I can describe it that way, primarily because ULI has conducted very many empirical studies of, of hotels, of restaurants, specific uses that are similar to the proposed components of the project.
They may be similar, but they may not be exactly the same. We've got a conference room for hotel guests who may check out and then go down to the conference room to finish up their conference. Cars stay in the parking lot. So, all the hotel spaces would be occupied, possibly past check-in time. And I don't think that's been addressed.
We believe that in the, in our industry, that it's best practice. Like, a lot of this is not an exact science.
That's what we're concerned about.
And the, the main resource, again, as, as even the city's consultant, in terms of who we vetted our parking analysis with, that that methodology is the best that we have to apply. And in relation to a validation of that that we also conducted by looking at the empirical characteristics that we've been able to derive from the Shade Hotel, which it, it seems that we're all in concurrence, that the city, city staff and their consultant also agreed that the Shade Hotel was a very good benchmark from an empirical study, that taking that into account actually resulted in a lower parking demand estimate than what we had based our studies findings on, which is ULI.
Okay. And then, also, the Shade Hotel has local proximity to a parking structure and additional parking. They have bus service year-round. We have just street parking and a shuttle that runs only part-time. How's that taken into account?
That is taken into account in, in terms of, it's the demand that was generated by the Shade Hotel, which is really independent of what supply they were using, or what mode of transportation, you know, they, they were arriving in, primarily because the Shade Hotel is also going to be 100% valet operated, which is, that's the main characteristic that we were, that we were after and that we had observed to be the case. And also, in our study, one of the things that we were very quick to note is the fact that in proximity to the project site, with, you know, there's the trolley, there is, you know, this abundance of, it's a very typical mode used by hotels now, mode of transportation, where a lot of them do not drive to the hotel. A lot of them would actually be using, whether it be Uber shuttles to the hotel, that, again, those were validated from the Shade Hotel's empirical study. So, in essence, those were taken in, into account in what we just considered to be the third column that's presented in our, the very last right-hand most column of our study that was just meant for validation. Again, that, the LLG estimate was empirically based, but that was just meant to validate a more conservative snapshot based on a more, I guess, recognized publication such as ULI, resource such as ULI.
Okay. And in engineering and everything that we do, we usually build in a safety factor for everything. How much of a safety factor is built into this parking study?
It's essentially the ULI, which is, which resulted in a surplus of one space versus our validated empirically-based column, which resulted in a surplus of six spaces at the end of the day. So, instead of saying that the study was going to be, instead of the study saying that the overall surplus in spaces at the end of the day would be six, we're basically going off of the one. And that is in comparison, then, to the 36 supply, space supply that, that we have. So, essentially, it's a 35 spaces requirement, required versus the 36 space supply, which resulted in that one space surplus, versus what the empirical study base, empirical base, which is 30, a demand of 30 spaces compared against the 36 space supply, resulting in an overall surplus of, of six spaces, if we were to take that. So, the comparison of both gives us our contingency, that we were still taking the more conservative estimate of a 35 space requirement for the project, as opposed to 30.
You're saying there's a possibility of five extra spaces?
Oh, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I should have been looking at the table. My apologies. So, it's actually, yes, that is correct. So, basically, 35 versus 30 gives us that, that difference and contingency of a five space, of five spaces. That is correct.
Okay. And who did the study on the Shade Hotel? Did you guys?
We did, but it's an independent subconsultant that we hire to be doing the actual physical counting. And then, we obtain that, the, those counts, those parking observations and queue counts and all that good stuff, and we tabulate it then. And that's what is represented in our, I believe it's in our appendix F, that's also referenced in the staff report.
And that was done in what month? Do you know?
November.
November, which is not typically a highly occupied month for tourist resorts.
But at the same time, when we double-checked the actual hotel occupancy, our peak condition, which represented, which represented our, the basis, the peak, the primary peak of our study was a Saturday, the hotel was 100% full.
Was the restaurant 100% full during its hours?
The, the restaurant, you know, it, that's, that's a bit, that's a bit.
During the summer, they get much more use for a restaurant than they do in November.
The bigger indicator, though, for hotels with restaurants, that the, it's really, what's more representative would be the metric, the parameter of rooms. So, room occupancy is what, in our industry, it's that parameter that, that runs the show. As opposed to square footage of restaurants in a hotel, it's really room occupancy that indicates to us, that's very indicative of parking demand.
Okay. So, my other question, this will be to the, what are the occupancies of the room? Two people, four people, six people? What do you got?
We mainly have, so we have 21 full-size rooms, which are, will be a queen-size bed. And then we also have seven smaller rooms, which will be a double occupancy, which would be twin beds.
Okay. Thank you.
My other question is, I read one of the letters where it said the architect arranged a meeting, private meeting with the planning commission on July 1st. I don't know if such a meeting was there.
That was part of my ex parte communications. So, Mr.
It's the whole planning commission.
No, that's incorrect. No, that'd be incorrect.
I, I will say, I was invited but chose not to attend.
Yep. Did you have any other questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Cameron?
You want to?
I have a question.
Okay, go. Commissioner McCann.
So, you said there's 21 full-size rooms with queen beds. Does that max occupancy of two, or is there's like a pull-out couch bed? Two people. Okay.
Mr. Sims, do you mind coming up? I need to get you on the record. Thanks.
In the microphone.
Yeah, there would be, I'd correct. Now, I said queen, potentially king-size bed, but the occupancy would be a double occupancy.
Okay, thank you. And then, back to the parking consultant. This is all, all of this parking space supply discussion is not taking any credit for any street parking along any frontages or anything, correct?
It is not.
Okay. And can you, how many parking spaces are there along frontage, legal spaces, let's say, along this project's frontage on Del Mar and on the street in the back?
We basically, when we do parking studies, and thank you for asking that, because it provides clarification that in any parking study that is done for a private, for a development project, the primary basis for supply would be onsite supply. Because most jurisdictions would only allow us to be able to use that as the basis for comparison, onsite supply. Given that, we do know that there are really, we are not taking into account any of the streets on Del Mar. We are not taking into account any of the available street parking also on Granada. And that has, that was never, those spaces are not included as part of that 36 space supply that you would see filtered throughout the parking study.
Okay, thank you. And how many spaces approximately are there on Granada and on the Del Mar that would be directly in front of this property, front or behind?
I believe there are four.
Well, there's front and back, so there's 10.
Okay.
So, that was 10?
Michael Luna indicated there's approximately 10 spaces.
Yeah, there's approximately 10 on the Del Mar side, and there's a few more on the, on the rear street.
I think there were, there are four.
Four on the rear street, yes.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
Okay, I've got a couple. So, in a memorandum to Mr. Campa, it was on July 30th, there's a paragraph in there about off-site parking for employees. I'll just read it. "To enhance parking supply contingencies in the event that additional parking is needed for employees, the project applicant has initiated discussions with the outlets to lease parking spaces for employees. And in off, off-site parking facilities, in the event those spots are needed, a plan to shuttle those employees between project and off-site parking locations will be supplied." Can I get an update on that?
Thank you. So, we do understand that employees parking in the neighborhood is a huge concern, even when our, being in the neighborhood, you see the uniforms walking up and down the sidewalk. That's obviously not what we want to have happen as well. So, in an effort to mitigate that, we did, it was mentioned, talking to them all, potentially. We did get a letter from them saying that they'd be open to leasing some spaces to us at some point if we do need them. And as a result, you know, there is, like even in another town where we operate, there is a shuttle that shuttles staff members from a public parking lot. is a shuttle that shuttles staff members from a public parking lot at a mall to the downtown in Manhattan Beach. And so, you know, that's another, I keep, there's so many years ahead of us between coastal and development to commit to something like that at this point in time as part of a direct condition. We did agree with Mr. Champa to add it as one of the, if we want the increase of seats at the restaurant, that we would have to implement such type of thing. But for now, we don't have a signed lease, as we don't even know when this property would be open.
Can you just characterize your attitude towards it? Just your general receptiveness to joining into that kind of an operation where you're shuttling the employees and not parking them onsite? Can I get, can I get you to talk about that?
Yeah, I would, we are open to making, and for us, as the hotel operator, we would much rather have paying guests onsite in those publics, in those stalls than having our employees taking up our parking. So that's one of the reasons I've, as the director of some of the business associations, have helped with these programs in other cities.
So that's for you, let me, I didn't hear what I was looking for. So let me ask you a direct question. That's a viable option that you are willing to do?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Did you by chance look at any other lots in your, you know, radius of your operation for similar off-site parking for employees that they would be required to use, that you would enter into agreement with that lot and have them just possibly walk to work?
That would be preferable. As I've mentioned, this is, unfortunately, we don't have any timeframe to offer these other individuals, so to be able to even discuss a contract with them, it's very difficult.
So... Why is that difficult?
Because we still have to go through coastal commission, we still have to get building permits. It could be two, three, even more years before we even have a viable open project.
Okay, so for you, it's not, it's, you're, you want to do it, it's just timing. Is that, am I putting words in your mouth?
For us, it's, so for us, it is always best to have easy access for parking for our guests.
Yeah.
If that means bringing our employees from an off-site to our facility, then 100% we are, we're open to any and all measures.
Okay, because I think, I really think that what I heard last time from our residents is that the parking on-street in front of their homes is what they want addressed.
Correct.
That that impacts their quality of life, that they can't use parking on the street where they live, because it's filled up with employees or whatever, guests of the hotel or visitors to the restaurant. To me, that's a concern, and I want to make sure that we are addressing that within the conditions properly and not. So I'm just a little concerned with the timing. I understand you're gonna have, that you're not, if, you know, whatever happens tonight, you have additional steps passed here for approval, mainly the coastal commission. And I know that that can take time, and I've heard, I've heard you say it could take up to two years and so forth, but we have you here, and I want to make sure we, you know, while you're here, we can address it. So if you'd be thinking about that, because, and when you hear the public comments, I think you'll, you'll hear that theme.
And I do want to, I completely agree, and I believe we have already somewhat agreed to a condition of that, of being part of our ability to, you know, we've already taken a 30-seat reduction under, in understanding that, and be able to get that 30-seat back, which would be obviously very instrumental for us, which would require five off-site spaces for our employees.
Yep. Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
You want? Yeah, sure.
Did I hear you say that at another hotel you operate, you do operate an employee shuttle to an off-site location?
We do not operate a hotel, but a restaurant, a group of restaurants. And there is a shuttle from the Manhattan Village Mall that has ample parking to downtown Manhattan Beach.
You guys are currently doing that operation now?
It's part of our business association that we developed, that.
Okay.
I was a board member and former president, so I can...
Okay.
Yeah, that could be duplicated here. I think that could be a net benefit if we had other restaurants on Del Mar perhaps joining in with you, so their employees are not parking on Granada. That could be a benefit. Any other questions? So I like, that's innovative thinking, I think that could be a benefit if we thought did that.
Maybe Jonathan can answer this for me quickly. With the reduction of the 30 seats in the restaurant, I'm looking at this parking study analysis, and we show 114 seats indoors, 16 seats outdoors to make the 130. Which seats are you proposing to eliminate to hit the 300, excuse me, the 100?
I believe that question's best to be directed to the applicant.
Well, there's gonna be apparently a total of 100 seats?
Correct.
When we're all said and done. On this chart, we show 114 indoor and 16 outdoor, which we do have an outdoor seating allowance. So are they gonna drop 30 seats indoor? Is that how the numbers work? Because it's not in the parking study analysis.
I believe the overall approach is that the, the original proposal was 130 seats. So the seating is proposed to be reduced by 30. How that to be reduced is, I guess, subject to the planning commission's comfortable, comfortability, as well as the applicant and what their desired approach is in terms of organizing the seating.
Michael, Michael knows the game these numbers play here.
Yes, thank you very much, Michael Luna Architect. So with a 100-seat restaurant, I believe we should be able to have the latitude of assigning those 100 seats wherever we want to put them, whether they're indoor or outdoor. We want to certainly charge up the patio dining, so we're probably gonna reduce some indoor and reduce some of the patio. But we should be able to have the flexibility, as long as we hold to the 100. We meet the minimum requirement for, the requirement to, for the 16-seat reduction in terms of the overall seating count. So it seems to me the design can, should be able to be flexible.
Well, I guess I was looking at, I don't know if we want to or should reduce that 16 that's available to you. So that would mean 30 would come out of the interior. Is that how you understand it?
No, no, I can't see that that should be implemented or that burden placed on us.
Because we're trying to get pedestrian-oriented outdoor seating.
Yes.
Yada, yada, yada. And the outdoor seating is a plus for the city, we like that.
Yes.
And I'd hate to say eliminate that.
Oh, we don't want to do that.
So it's gotta come from the inside.
Yeah.
For now. I just want to make sure that we're aware that we gotta figure something out there.
Yeah, but like, if you had a restaurant proposal for you at any other restaurant in town, and they had 100 seats, I'm not aware of any other situation where we dictated just how many has to be on the patio and how many has to be inside?
We don't, we just do it where it's complimentary to the parking available.
Right, but the limitation of 100 seats should be able to be, you should be able to designate those either indoor or outdoor, however you want to place them, because we meet the requirements of the code for over, I think you gotta have 64 seats or something like that in order to qualify for the...
16.
For the 16, something like that.
Is it the 16 if there's no parking required for those?
Yeah, those are the 16 where there's, yeah, that's an exemption that the code allows, yeah.
Because I was looking at the parking state, that would mean that the city's parking standard would be reduced by three-ish, three spaces, which puts you down to 53 that would be required by code. So there's less of a gap between your proposal and the city code on this chart.
So, so I think that kind of speaks also to the contingency you were talking about in the parking study. You know, where is, you asked, where could, where is the contingency for parking? We believe that the parking study is conservative. Not only do, does the architect and the owner feel it's conservative, but we have two professional top-notch parking firms who have, the numbers they've come up with feel that they are conservative. So, in terms of that count. But here tonight, we're looking at the overall parking study based on 130 seats. So the contingency and the conservative aspect of it, you know, where is the contingency? We're putting in another five spaces here tonight as a contingency by reducing our seating count from 130 to 100. So I think it's both built into the parking study and analysis, as well as our effort to reduce the number of seats in the restaurant, which we agreed to, to go from 130 to 100. So that's, we're building in a contingency for sure. I would say that.
Very good, thank you. And the one thing I want to state to everyone here, we are, and people in the audience, we're looking this as, this is being operated by anybody. And what we put in place has to be enforceable to make anyone do what he's offering, because ownerships change. And so, as much as some people like or don't like the applicant sometimes, it's off the table, who they are. We're looking at it as a land use. So, thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's time for public comment. You can turn in a blue card, and I can call on you. That's how it works. I've got nine cards, and I'm gonna call three at a time. If you want to come over to the side so that we can move it along, that would be great. So the first speaker is Bill Brooks, followed by Peter Haft, followed by Larry Culbertson, and then Matt West after Larry. So we'll start with Bill Brooks, will be our lead-off public comment.
I was speaking on C, not B.
I'm sorry?
I was speaking on C, on Ole Hansen, not on D.
You're C?
Yes.
That's gonna be continued.
Okay, so can I speak on that now, or can, or...
So I'm afraid not. We're in the middle of a public hearing on number, on B, 8B.
Are you coming up to C tonight?
It'll be after this.
Okay, perfect, then I'll speak then, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Brooks, are you here?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, gotcha. I'll put you over here. Okay, Peter Haft, and then Larry Culbertson, and then Matt West.
Peter Haft? Welcome. Thank you for having me. I just have a written statement to make, I will email this to everyone afterwards, but just want to read it off. As I stand here, I am not able to argue the technicalities and specifications of the various regulations that apply to a project like this. I believe, however, I'm convinced that I can rely on you and the other planners and commission members who are bound to diligently apply them with one overriding mandate, and that is to interpret such regulations and act on them in the best interest of the community and its residents. And particularly in the case of a structural change to arguably one of the most important streets in our town, to the nearby residents of such a proposal. My wife and I are two of several such affected persons in the room tonight, and it is from that perspective I am speaking here. In our first visit to San Clemente in 1999, we were struck how sweet and charming and friendly and quiet and, yes, far away, San Clemente was. That notion led to deciding on San Clemente as a place that we would someday retire to and build a beautiful home for us to enjoy for our grandchildren and children to come and visit, a magical place called the Spanish Village by the Sea. After acquiring and then renting our Granada property for 17 years, we consulted with and asked Michael Luna to design one of his Spanish Revival buildings to our specifications, understanding that someday soon we would live there. Thus was the beginning of our interaction, our interaction with San Clemente Planning, the San Clemente Building Department, the California Coastal Commission, and a few other government offices, including some in County of Orange. Those engagements and a great general contractor and more than $1.3 million got us a beautiful landmark property. We spend months every, in every year and want to continue doing so as long as we can truly enjoy all the qualities of San Clemente that we recognized 25 years ago. Please excuse all the digression, but now to the point. For a long time now, San Clemente has been known as a last-best place due to its charm and history. The project under consideration, just as a hotel, is likely to be the largest single-purpose structure to be built on Del Mar since the old Hotel San Clemente. Add that, add to that, a restaurant operation would probably be the single-largest business enterprise on the street. Now consider not only the demands on the existing infrastructure, which includes parking, deliveries, and noise, this will of necessity be a 24-hour-a-day operation immediately adjacent to a largely residential street with hundreds of people and property owners and other businesses affected in mostly negative ways, as you've heard, you will hear about this evening. I'll end my statement by appealing to you, as I did earlier, to make a decision based on acting in the best interest of the community residents, particularly nearby residents. This is not Huntington Beach, not, or Newport Beach, or Laguna Beach.
Thank you.
Coastal LA Manhattan Beach at San Clemente, Spanish Village by the Sea, the last-best place, and it really is like that. In my opinion, this project is an overreach and destructive to that legacy.
Thank you, Mr. Haft, thank you. Larry Culbertson, followed by Matt West. I do want to remind everybody, I know you've, most of you have been here before, many times before, we do have the three limit for fairness. Everybody gets the same amount of time.
Aye, Captain.
Yes, sir. Good to see you, Larry, welcome.
Larry Culbertson, San Clemente Historical Society. I'm gonna sound like a broken record tonight, excuse me, but that's the job I've accepted. From the first time that I saw the plans for this project, I believe that the 1980 shed roof addition on the front of the historic building needed to be removed as a starting point for further conversation. You do not allow the, you would not allow that addition today, and you would require that its removal if the owner wanted admission into the city's Mills Act program. But the owner was adamant, he needed that square footage. You were able to convince him to reduce the footprint of that addition and lower the roof, but it will still be there obscuring the public view of the historic Antoinette Apartments. You've determined that the project complies with the Secretary of Interior standards. I do not agree. Those standards do not support new construction adjacent to a historic building that would be more massive than the historic resource. This project is far more massive than the historic building, and it is hard up against it. There will even be an elevator tower that's, I think, 12 feet taller than the historic building, again, right up against it. There is no question in my mind that the adverse impacts on the historic resource would be extreme, and that an environmental impact report should be required. The 28-room hotel and 130 or 100-seat restaurant is far too much project for this site. Either a hotel or a restaurant might work, but both will greatly overburden Avenida Del Mar with traffic and parking. The decision to use the Urban Land Institute methodology to determine the amount of parking required is horrible. City code would require 56 spaces, which would be, which would still not be enough. ULI computes that only 35 spaces are needed. That's preposterous. Parking is already extremely difficult on Avenida Del Mar, especially on weekends. This project would make the difficult parking near impossible. If you believe in that ULI analysis, what have we been cheating all the developments in town that went by our standards? Maybe we need to change those standards and lower them. I don't think so. So please consider carefully the adverse impact this high-density project would have on the historic, small-town village character that we all love about San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Matt West, then David Little, followed by Sherri D.
Hi, Matt West, I'm a San Clemente resident, and there's a couple of concerns I just want to address. I'm going to kind of rapid-fire a bunch of questions based on what we heard earlier, more just to create fodder for the commission to discuss. Let's start with the parking studies. So the Shade Hotel, I just looked it up, is exactly 6.5 miles from LAX. So, the Shade Hotel, I just looked it up, is exactly 6.5 miles from LAX. So, people are probably not driving to that hotel. They are taking cabs from the airport. If you go to Manhattan Beach, I would look very closely, do they have metered parking spots in there? Because they're rotating every two hours. There's plenty of other parking structures in that area. It is a metropolitan city. It's not a small town at the end of Orange County with Camp Pendleton on its side. We are, for all intents and purposes, on an island here, so people are driving here. The other thing I want to talk about is, so, I would ask the questions of if they have those things in place, how many of those parking structures do they have? That ULI study, I don't think takes that into consideration, but I may be wrong here. The other thing to ask about is the deliveries. It was something that was a big topic in the previous meeting, and it really has not been addressed here. It says no semi-trucks will be allowed. I own a restaurant, actually, I own a couple, and we're a big enough customer that we get everything that we want. We get same-day deliveries if we want. There's no such thing as, hey Shamrock, hey Cisco, hey US Foods, can you send us your small vehicle? They don't exist, especially in a town like San Clemente. They're driving from Fullerton. They're driving from wherever. It's one big route, right? They have 16 stops in general per truck. They do have some bobtails. They're still a big semi. It's a 23-foot semi. It just doesn't have the big trailer extension on it. It's going to be blocking driveways. To say that these deliveries are going to be happening in a one-way-in, one-way-out area, deliveries and valet at the same time? I know it's, it's 5:00 to 10:00 in the morning is when it's going to happen, but people are checking in, trying to come in and check in early. You get people checking in in the morning, and you get deliveries backing that up. A car has to make a three-point turn to get out of there, right? You have people waiting for valet. You're also getting people that are checking out of the hotel, people checking into the hotel at the same time. So, I would, you know, I would ask the questions about peak hours and how they're going to handle that. And then the last one here is, did the Shade Hotel have a separate delivery loading area? Anything like that? Or did they have a horseshoe? Was it a one-way-in, one-way-out? It's all things that need to be considered. I personally live across the street, and I will have to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Little.
I'll go with Lytle.
Lytle, so, okay, that's what I did last time.
You're not the first one, trust me.
Okay, that's what I did last time. And then we have Sherri D. after you.
Mark Twain was born in 1835, and he was a smart dude. He said, "Get your facts first and then distort them as you wish." And what I hear from the applicant and from the architect is creating, and from the study, is creating a solution to a problem. I think we need to go back, the minimum, and by the way, I was taught never to do the minimum. I'm not a C student, D student. You don't strive to do the minimum. 56 spaces is what the minimum was by city code. This malarkey about, we can do this with 35 or 36 with lifts, the malarkey about having 12 people run this thing. Parler, which is a subsidiary of Vine, is a brand-new restaurant that I think does real well in our city. They run 30 people on a Friday, Saturday to run a restaurant correctly. So, you got to put that into perspective, you guys, and keep it, you know, keep them under pressure to do the right thing, because we want them to do the right thing. As far as deliveries, I have 2,000 customers I deliver weekly. A five to 10, everybody, let me go back. Everybody wants their delivery between 6:00 AM and 10:00 AM in the morning. Not everybody gets their delivery between 6:00 and 10:00 AM. It's a pecking order. It's also done on a logistics format or scheduling, because in the distribution business, you make your money on efficiency and maximizing routes. Cisco comes from Riverside, Shamrock comes from Eastvale, and La Mirada is where US Food Service comes from. They are not sending small trucks down here to basically appease one location. And like Matt said, San Clemente's an island. San Diego doesn't service it. That stops at Oceanside, and everything else comes from either the inland empire or LA. The last thing I want to finish with, you, as our commissioners, are appointed, I believe, every two years by the city council. And my belief is it's to protect the city first and do what's right for the city. It's to protect and serve the businesses that are currently here right now and the code enforcement. Third, it's to basically take care of the residents that live here and make them, this their home. And I think in this case, I have no animosity towards the applicant and the architect, it's to protect them from themselves, because, like he said, when Yelp stops giving them bad reviews, it's going to come down on them. Like the commissioner said, they're the owners right now. That doesn't mean that they're going to be the owners in the future. Restaurants change all the time. So, I'm hoping that basically on the record, when you guys make this decision, if you make the decision to go with the CLUs, basically, CUPs, excuse me, you're kicking the can to another city council two or three years down the road, because it simply doesn't work based on what they're trying to cram into the small spot. So, that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherri D.
Is that Cherie Lytle?
Cherie.
My last name.
Yeah, you did not. It just says D. Yes. And then Michael Carmichael is following you, and then we have George Alvarez.
Hey, hello. I'm Eric.
Welcome.
I sent you all a letter. You got it. I hear what the developer said tonight. I appreciate they're trying to compromise and make some changes, trying to get there. Think we can on some. However, parking is non-negotiable, and they're doing a study for Shade Hotel. We are not Manhattan Beach, okay? We don't have parking structures built here. We don't have an infrastructure like that for parking. We don't have paid meter downtown. We don't have permit parking for our residents. It's very tricky here, and with the new builds coming in, we need to get it right. The residents are being taxed on that. Like Matt said, Shade Hotel is within six miles of LAX. That's not in the Sprite and Shiny Study that they use as a gold standard. They're going to be busing, Ubering, taking different forms of vehicles than we would particularly here, right? We might come from Orange County and do that, but we're not six miles away. Also, too, I wanted to say, 25 spaces are now gone with outdoor dining. Maybe they don't have that there. I don't know if they did. It wasn't put in the study. We are non-ADA compliant most of the time on Granada. If somebody needs ADA, when these employees are coming over and parking all night or all day until they are off shift at 11:00 or 12:00, it forces residents that have multi-unit dwellings or short driveways, they can't have spaces in front of their house. They have to park on the driveway, which goes onto the sidewalk. We have officer sweeps that come in the middle of the night, some, well, early morning, and they ticket everybody because we're non-ADA compliant, and those people that live there cannot park. They have one garage stalls or short driveways. You guys, these projects are taxing us, and if we're not going to build structures, we're not going to make new people build parking that's adequate, we're not going to go underground, we're not going to give permit parking to residents that cannot park in their, in front of their house or have their families extended come from dinner, we need to start getting together and grouping and figuring out how we're letting Pierborough Hotel come in. This one, the one that's in North Beach, we need to start figuring out. We're not Manhattan Beach. We don't have back alleys to use to get into our driveways. This is a different thing, and the gold study doesn't tell you about that. She said in the first meeting, "I can tell you if I build it in a desert standalone and nobody else is coming, and I know what the project entails and who needs to park there, what it will look like." Otherwise, we take a gold study, and it is basically used by parking experts, and I can try to tell you what it was. Hotel Shade and this project are not mirrored, and they're not equal. So, I appreciate you taking that into time, and the G, oh, can't talk about it. Talk to Parler and Joe, GM, owner-manager, 130 spaces.
Thank you.
30 employees on the weekends.
Thank you. Tom?
Tom Carmichael, yes.
Welcome, Tom.
I live directly across the street from where the driveway's going to be, and I'm just questioning, when you have to go around and have a three-point turn to get out of there, how these trucks are getting in and out with cars parked along there? Because half the time, people park in our driveways, you know, it only went in this much, but are they thinking about Christmas when we have the walk down Del Mar Street and it's closed? You ever see the parking on our street? Are they going to shut the hotel down? Or Fiesta, they're going to shut the hotel down? Or any of those, any of the events that are on Del Mar, I don't think they're figuring any of that parking when those days come around, if they're going to close it down. Go back in time a little bit. Last time I was here, I listened to a guy come and talk about an ADA, building a rooftop deck, and kid's sitting partying up on top of it right next to him. He was looking to put a fence in. He was going to talk to Jonathan. This has a whole row of balconies looking right in the backyard next door, a whole row of them, and I don't think anybody's thinking about that. It just is, it's invasive for people that live there, and it's invasive when you put the whole entry and everything in a residential area. I think we're going about this, not really looking, you know, I bought a house, I bought that house, believe it or not, Michael Luna designed the house for me. It never got built, because I got tired of going through the city, but I remodeled it for my daughter. But I decided, because I bought this house in 2012, we're going to move in. We're right in town. It's beautiful. We can walk to dinner. We can walk to the beach, and it's a great place to live. I'm just afraid that all this gimmick that they're throwing at you is just to appease you for right now to say yes, and I think that's all it is. And I think, you look at it real close, but that being said, if they do ever do this thing, please make them put sound walls around that whole work area, so that we're not listening to all that for six months while they try and get down, remediate the dirt, take all the dirt away, and bring good dirt back and do everything they have to do. So, that's what I'm asking. Look at it, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Appreciate it. Mr. Alvarez? I also, while you're coming up, let me just make a note here. I've got a speaker card with no name on it. So, the other speaker I have is Paul Parsons. So, if you want to speak, and I haven't called your name, come on up here and help me out with that. Mr. Alvarez, can we do, reset the timer there, Tamara, for Mr. Alvarez?
Good evening. How are you guys doing? Your brother remembered me from the last meeting. I'm just going to address this very fast. I did some search in the last two months. I am a general contractor. I work for a major company all over the state of California. I deal with architects, engineerings, all over the state. So, I basically consult with them about these parking studies, and I actually forward them the plans, the files, and they evaluate it. They told me that is totally unsupported facts and the results, because like they compare with Manhattan Beach, I think it is, we are, we have no parking structure. We have no parking available to share. So, this is called legally unsupported fact. So, it's basically, that study is not feasible for this project. Other thing, they're trying to reduce the parking, get rid of the roof deck, get rid of the banquet, reduce the amount of rooms, provide the real parking, get rid of the lift, provide real parking, because the lift is people waiting in the block, on Granada Block, right next to me, 223 Del Mar, trying to get this thing approved, and they will install a 4,300-square-feet lot right next, on the other side of my house, lift to increase the parking spaces. So, I will have lift and left and lift and right stereo sound, you know, both sides. So, the, the, it's not feasible. It's too big to be included in five lots. I am not opposing the project, but I was told that that restaurant was going to be around 4,000 square feet and 10 rooms. That's it, and I'm okay with that. But no, this, this is massive. This is going to make my house and my life miserable. I lived there since 1991, and that was my place to choose to die in that property. I will not get the cool breeze. It will block my ocean view. I'm going to have to deal with people piling in the roof deck. I have to deal with noise, deliveries, and everything else, and I know that something was going to be built behind my house someday, but not this massive thing. No lift working. What happened? The lift would break. I have mechanics. The lift break. You know, they can, they are not able to use it. What happened in the holidays, like Tom just said, Fiesta, car shows, when they do the parade, the kids, and the school, you know, it's going to alter our life forever, my life and my neighbors. So, anyway, just want to address that, and remember, unsupported facts.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you Paul?
I am.
All right. Hold on one second.
Hi, Cameron. How are you?
Good. If, I haven't called your name, I do have the speaker card with no name on it, so please come on up after Paul. Paul, welcome.
So, I'm Paul Parsons, an Ole Hanson historic homeowner, three blocks from this property, and a member of the Historical Society, and I'm going to share something that might be unpopular in the room. My opinion is that this hotel is, has been well-designed and is likely going to be built, and I, in my opinion, probably should be built. Change is coming to San Clemente, 1999 is not today. I'm sorry to say it. As much as I'd love it to stay the way it is, it's not going to stay the way it is, and what your job is, is to put the guardrails on this development so that it's not unbridled. That's what your job is. We know development is coming. So, the idea here is, how can we have Mr. Sims provide in the contract and the, and the conditions of occupancy, that he is going to provide off-site parking for the employees, that there's going to be some, some test to, and, and some way that we can monitor the traffic situation and have him adapt in a way that will provide for some security for the homeowners around that property? Change is coming. It's going to happen. I actually look forward to the hotel and the restaurant that's going to be there. I look forward to enjoying it. I look forward to inviting my friends to come down and stay there. I actually appreciate that this is going to be in our neighborhood, but it needs to be done in a responsible way, okay? That's the point. So, the concerns of the citizens here can be addressed, and, and you can provide some conditions now, so that the approval is based on making sure those concerns are mitigated. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Did we have anyone else with the no name? No one wants to?
I can go three more minutes.
Okay, look, okay, thank you. Hey, first of all, this is the second time around, and you guys are back and prepared and articulate, and on behalf of my colleagues up here, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to take it seriously, be prepared, and make articulate comments. It's really important. Thank you. With that, I'm going to transition us into discussion, but I'm, for the first half of our discussion, I'm going to keep the public hearing open so that we can call staff. I see Mr. Ponson there. I've got some questions for you, Zach. I know we'll probably have some questions for the applicant. So, why don't we work through maybe where we want to have some of those follow-up questions, and then when we can exhaust all of that, I'll close the public hearing, and we can have our discussion amongst ourselves. Is that okay?
Chair Cosgrove, we also should allow the applicant any rebuttal time.
You're right. You're right. I just figure we're going to call him up and start asking him questions, so, but that is part of our process. I do want to follow it. So, the city attorney is right. Mr. Sims, what is it, five minutes, or is it three minutes?
I think we give three for rebuttal.
Yeah. Do you, Mr. Sims, or want to come up and speak to this?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity for the rebuttal.
Yeah.
So, I think the important thing to say is that we did not work in some kind of vacuum here to design this project. We invite, we involved city staff early, early on, before we lifted a pencil on this project. We went over our design concepts throughout our design process and our plan development and so forth, worked closely with staff. We worked closely with the historic, we, we invited the- we, we invited the Historic Society to meet with us and get their take on things, the Downtown Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce. We held two open houses at Restaurants on Del Mar and invited the committee, the community to join in to learn more about our proposal. We rented a booth at the Music Festival just recently and so that folks can really know what we're doing here. So it's, we've been a real open book here. Everything we've tried to do, we've shared with everybody. So we went out and we hired the best parking consultant that was available to us. And that because it was an element of the code. The element of the code says if you got a mixed-use opportunity, which the city wants, mixed-use opportunity in this zone to do a parking study. We did that. And the city said, we wanna hire the, the other best parking consultant available to the city to check our work. They did that and they concurred and agreed with us. So I don't know what else we could have done with regard to analyze this parking. We went pretty far above and beyond what is necessary. But what's important is that these concerns from the neighbors, which are so valid with regard to parking, we get it. We know that downtown is, has parking issues at certain times. But beyond Del Mar, there is a lot of, there's parking, there's something like 100 spaces at the, at the library. There's these other public parking lots. This, this bus, the trolley that we have is really making a difference. The, the little electric cars you see running around and so forth, they're all making a difference. We've considered all of that. With regard to deliveries and parking and so forth, I do believe we have the best darned conditions of approval as we sit right now that we've worked out. We listened to this group last time and they raised their concerns and we went to work. We went, worked closely with Mr. Champa to say, how can we address these? And darn it, I feel we did. We came up with new conditions that are really enforceable, that are really applicable. And we think that will make a difference to address these considerations. And it is a conditional use permit here that you're, you know, the condition of your approval says that we have to operate in this, in this sphere. And darn it, we are prepared to do so.
Okay, Mr. Luna, thank you for providing the response. Okay, I can lead us off, but I really wanna defer to my colleagues if someone else wants to just start us, but I'm happy to do it as well. Did you?
I have a few questions.
Yeah, great, we'll start with Commissioner McCann.
Jonathan. So what's the justification for not using the, the city code parking requirement and using the ULI approach?
So for a hotel use, the parking standards can either be from the city zoning ordinance, which are regulations based on whatever the uses that are proposed for this project, or they can be reduced with the parking study. So the applicant prepared a parking study to evaluate a reduced parking demand. That study utilized the ULI, which was then peer-reviewed by the city. And there were several iterations to ensure that that parking study, which is, which is, allows for the reduction of the parking, is subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. So the planning commission has to approve that. And so the city hired a parking consultant to peer-review that to ensure that the, the justification and the analysis was solid to justify the parking that was, demand that was proposed.
And who's the, who's the city's parking consultant that reviewed it?
Kim Lee Horn. Our consultant is available if there's any specific questions related to the city's analysis.
Okay. The bottom line is they're, they're happy with the, they, they concur with the findings of the applicant's parking study?
Correct, with the, including the addendum that was provided as well.
Okay, and, and the conditions of approval reflect the addendum and so forth?
Yes, sir.
The conclusive findings, okay. Would this restaurant be allowed to utilize a parklet for more tables out in the public right of way? And/or is the, can we write a condition that they're not allowed to do that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll respond to that. Certainly a condition could be added. I don't know that there would be a practical need to do that. The parklet program will expire July 1 of 2026, so the commission will have a, a new opportunity to evaluate whether that program continues at all at, at any of those locations by July of 2026. I, I don't foresee operations commencing at this location by, by that date to be likely, but we certainly could include a condition if the commission desired.
But it's, 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 there's always the possibility that that gets extended.
True.
Okay, did, um, was an underground parking structure considered on this project?
I think the early conceptual evaluation of the project by the applicant, that was considered but deemed financially infusible.
I, I can, I'm gonna add to that. So in between the parcels, and this, this might be something that is appropriate for the architect to comment on as well, but SDGNE has an easement for power lines that run between the two. So there's gonna be limitations on any kind of structure that exists above or below ground along that easement.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all my questions for now.
Okay, Commissioner Prescott, Laura?
I'm gonna move away from parking for just a minute because I'm focused on the delivery. How do you guarantee, though I appreciate that, you know, you have carved out some times for delivery, but how do you guarantee delivery at the hours that you suggest? How is that done?
Speaking to one of the individuals that's in the business, we actually do write it into our contract and we do refuse deliveries. That's how you teach your vendors to show up when you want them to. So at those times is when we, we, we also get our deliveries. And we have dozens, over 60 restaurants we leverage to make sure that we get the times that we want.
So where does San Clemente end on the route? Or is San Clemente first, middle, last?
That's up to them to decide when they, but they have to deliver within those times.
Okay, so they would skip a delivery, come down and deliver to San Clemente, then drive back?
Or sometimes they'll, there are preferences to leave early in the eve, in the, in the off-hours. So they could potentially leave at 2:00 in the morning, hit some key drops on the way down, and then we would be the last one at 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM.
And that is, and, and so when you deliver, so now you have a truck that is food preparation for your restaurant and you refuse it. So now your restaurant doesn't have the food. So how does, how does this work?
It is the only way that we've been able to, not said the only way, but it's just one of the ways you actually work with the vendors to, you know, understand that that's what we, we need, so. And if we, if they're not able to deliver, then the times we want, there are other vendors available.
And how would the city know that a truck was, let's say there is a complaint because there's a large semi coming through blocking the, the back street? How, how would the city know that you refused the delivery? Or how, how, how do you communicate with the, the city that this is, this is your policy and you're actually acting on the policy?
For certain, probably will, the city will receive photos from neighbors adjacent. And we'll have a log or a note, and we can even show an invoice or something of the nature that shows that we refuse delivery at that point in time.
So just to be clear, I'm not against having a hotel and nor am I against having a restaurant. I am concerned about the combination of the two and the action that is happening with the parking on the one side, the deliveries on the other side, the congestion that could take place. So that's, that's where my focus is. So I'm thinking about the deliveries, I'm also considering about the parking issue and that we seem to already have issues where some of the restaurants, their employees are parking on Del Mar or they're parking on the back street. So that's already, some of them because of the parklets. So maybe we should address that and have on the Granada side, as they do in other areas where it says, you know, no, no parking unless you're a resident. But that's a different story. Right now, I wanna see how we can address the parking with the employees and that congestion on Granada and guarantee that those deliveries are what you say they will, will be. You're putting them in writing, but I just wanna know what the process is to keep you to your word on this. Not that you're not, you're an honest man, but things happen and we can't control everything. I can't control Amazon, I can't control UPS. Sometimes they're coming at 4:00 in the morning to, you know, throw a little box at my door. And sometimes they're not coming until, you know, 6:00 PM. They just say it's coming that day. And I just wanna know how you're able to control it.
Just the, essentially the power of the purse, it's, that's what it is with our vendors as well as with our employees. We've terminated employees for violating parking constraints in other beach towns such as Belmont Shore, as well as, you know, we operate in beach towns, this is, this is a continued issue. And we're able, and we feel that we're able to mitigate it.
I'm more thinking of more like Balboa Island as to what San Clemente is rather than Manhattan Beach. Manhattan Beach is somewhat known to, to have the parking and to have the busyness. And that, they don't have the narrow streets, like we have the narrow streets. You can pull out and turn around on their larger streets. They do have metered parking. And again, they do have areas where you can park, which we don't have metered parking. That's another issue that we might wanna consider. But unfortunately, you're coming in when we don't have these pla, these, these backups in place. So you might be the first one that triggers all of this. And I, I apologize that you have to go through this, but we have to consider the neighbors as well.
Sure.
This is a very, very large project and you have a lot of moving parts. I appreciate you answering my questions.
Does he have more?
No, that's, that's enough for me.
Okay.
For now.
Steve, did you have any, you're good for now? Gary, do you wanna talk, ask questions to staff or applicant based on public comment? With just comments? Oh, we'll hold then. Bart, do you wanna interact with either the applicant or staff?
Maybe both.
Great.
Before our meeting, I kinda shanghaied Jonathan and asked him what all the other restaurants in the area of this one have for business hour restrictions. I found some errors in here as far as what I seem is familiar for all the other ones. Like, I mean, NICS and all, they, they have no outdoor acoustic music allowed typically. The hours are certainly not to 2:00 any day of the week, unless something changed on the society building, which I don't remember. So to compare this, the hours for this building, what are all the other operators obligated to meet? So we can be consistent for all restaurant operators.
I don't have all the data of all the restaurants. My recollection is that the majority of them are until midnight. For those that are, you know, kinda have a more of a bar setting, an evening restaurant. However, I believe the 2:00 AM, I can let the applicant confirm, but I believe that 2:00 AM is limited to internal lobby, bar, restaurant area that's limited to hotel guests only. But I'll let the applicant confirm if that is truly the case. It's based on recollection.
And I, we'll make a comment on that. It's typically not been in, for our discussions that the bars and restaurants along Del Mar are really meant to be bars. They're meant to be restaurants that happen to have a bar. And your restaurants are shutting down at 10:00, but you're requesting to keep the bars open till 2:00. And that just isn't something we've done in the past or that I think the city wants for Del Mar.
I can say that the intent is not to be a bar, but to be an amenity to the guests to keep them on property. So there's plenty of examples up and down the coastline from, you know, the Rosewood up in Montecito to Shudders to all these types of higher-end restaurant, hotels that do have that amenity where the restaurant might shut down, service might shut down, but the guests can continue to converse as if they were in their own home having a drink with other guests. That was the intent of that.
And then, Jonathan, on page 13 of the resolution, we've got interior bar hotel guest alcohol, alcohol service for Friday and Saturday night. Midnight to 2:00 AM? That doesn't seem to make sense.
I think it's like a carryover, excuse me, from just the normal restaurant. So this is like a carve-out for when the, when the restaurant.
When it would be.
And, so the lobby and restaurant, the section below that, the co, or the row below that is noon to, noon to 10:00 and noon to midnight. So that's what that's intended to be. It's not intended to just be only open for midnight.
Go till 2:00 AM. I can't make a finding on that unless I know what all the other restaurants in the area have to do. Because it seems like this is contrary to what I've seen over the last 15 years. And also the amplified music, I don't think is quite clear either. Typically, we don't have amplified music exterior on restaurants. I mean, we've even had complaints of TVs being amplified music. And that's been in front of us numerous times, I'm saying heads nodded, that I understand ambient music, something low-key, but in here it keeps saying that the ambient or amplified music will meet the city code. Well, that's 50 decibels. No. Amplified music's gonna have to be either more speakers and really low volume to make it work outside or something like that. No, it wouldn't be amplified music. It'd be, it can't be a, a band inside with the music outside. But that's just, we need a definition of the ambient music or whatever the word was you were using on, let's see, what was it here? But I think we need to know what NICS, the society, El Ranchito Cottons and all have to do as far as their hours go. And these restaurants and bars need to meet the same, same standard, all the way down Del Mar.
Is this maybe a, a sound limiter of fashion that was even conversed, talked about for the Ole Hansen building? I think it was what was proposed for us to mitigate any excessive loud exterior.
Well, I guess the point is that on Del Mar and T, the T-zone, typically outdoor amplified sound is not allowed. It can only be indoor. And that's historically been the case. And I don't see how this can be deemed something different that should have that, so. Jonathan, did you find any hours or input on that?
Yeah, I think I can provide some color to other businesses that are generally in the area. I'm gonna start with ones that address the, the bar towards 2:00 AM and then I'll move into some other discussions. There, there's not currently any use permits that continue until 2:00 AM on Del Mar. There's a couple at Granada and El Comino Real that do continue until 2:00 AM. There's three bars at that intersection that operate until 2:00 AM on Del Mar. The, the most recent approvals have indicated a, a closure time of around midnight. So Jane is one example next to The Cellar, that's a cocktail bar, operates until midnight. The most common, commonly applied condition related to amplified sound does recognize the existing shift in the, the city's noise ordinance at 10:00 PM. And, and so that was contemplated in the condition that's referenced here where there is a, a 10:00 PM shift. PM shift. The nearby 200 block examples that would relate to that, Cotton's has an approval for amplified entertainment indoors and theirs does end at 10:00 PM. Across the street, also 200 block, there is an allowance for continuation beyond that until midnight at the Beach Fire. So the corners of Ola Vista and Delmar. And that, I'm looking at that use permit currently. The, it is one of the use permits that does allow for some form of outdoor live entertainment or amplification. And the, I'll just read that condition from that project. That condition states outdoor live entertainment is restricted in area to the large plaza. Only low scale amplified music is permitted. The outdoor live entertainment is limited to the following hours of operation between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM on Thursdays and Fridays, between noon and 10:00 PM on Saturdays and between noon and 4:00 PM on Sundays. And then it indicates that any modification to these hours would require follow-up public hearing. I'm not familiar that they regularly operate live entertainment in that plaza. This is the plaza that is oriented towards Ola Vista. But it is a, it was contemplated and approved at that location. I think the staff recommendation in this case was to address the discussion of noise through the installation of a noise limiter. So John went through some of the new conditions that were recommended for application and the formatting of those conditions where it has like a four-point some number, five-point some number, indicates when those would come into play. So the noise limiter one is referenced within the site inspection process. So the thought there would be that the noise limiter would have to be installed and an inspection would have to be conducted to ensure that that software is working appropriately to limit whatever the final setup of ambient speakers would look like and be inspected by staff to ensure that the decibel limits are being complied with before issuance of the final on the inspection for the project.
Okay. My question though is, if you say it meets the.
They say if it meets the city sound standards, that's 50 decibels. And that's, that's a no-go for me. It's going to have to be something much lower than that for ambient music in there and that can be handled by multiple speakers at 10 decibels for that matter. And that's my concern and I appreciate you looking up those hours. That clarifies something for me. So that's it for starters on my comments.
Gary, you want to interact with the staff or the applicant? And then I'll take my turn last. Okay.
I would guess, and maybe staff could back me up, but deliveries along Delmar, if you just look at Google and look at the map, 80% of the restaurants don't even have back, you know, access. So they must be getting deliveries on Delmar in the morning.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
On our street.
All right. But what I'm talking about is since that happens and since most businesses don't open till 10:00, I mean, I don't see why this business isn't required to take all their deliveries through Delmar between, you know, 2:00 in the morning or midnight and 5:00 or 6:00 or, my wife says they don't open till 10:00, so 10:00. But because then nobody's going to be parking on the street and they just pull up and they deliver. Am I right or wrong?
You're both. So the thought there on the staff side is that, especially with new development, whenever possible and to the extent possible, we want to constrain their activities onsite. And so that's the movement between requiring a designated delivery area on their property.
That's my only bad part.
Yeah.
Right? That's my only sin. But if you look at the aerial, 80% of the properties, because of the age of our city and what else, they don't have back alleys. They don't have back, there's not enough space to even pull a truck around their back end. So I do feel a little bit, you know, on the, we can't make up for history until we have the guts to either have, you know, paid parking or build a parking structure so that people park in a structure and then walk, you know, to the area like people in Santa Barbara or Santa Monica are kind of trained. You know, this is always going to happen. So I'd be in favor that all the deliveries take, you know, effect from Delmar. That'd get rid of the, you know, the delivery issue. And I think that can take place. And that's kind of a give to, you know, the citizens that live on Granada. But when they bought their houses on Granada, they knew they had butted, you know, commercial.
Ninety-one was no restaurant.
Yeah. Well, anyways.
Ten years has changed.
I would like to accommodate this, but I don't know that we can, you know, really address the total perfection of the parking requirements until the city does a bigger and better job of, you know, parking. Because I would estimate most of these restaurants, they don't meet the parking requirement or somehow we finagle a little deal that they could park down by the library. So, you know, I'm willing to look at the delivery all to the front, but, you know, public streets are public streets, but the parking does bring the issue to the, you know, Granada side. And which does make me think to the maximum, they should have really all their parking onsite. But I think we can accommodate by putting all the deliveries on the other side, on Delmar, or probably 85% of the restaurants all get their deliveries in early in the morning where we don't see it.
Is that, is that where you?
Those are my comments.
Okay. Just on that, my understanding and reading the conditions are if they're going to take a delivery off of Granada, it's not going to be done, they're not parking on Granada, they're pulling into their drive aisle, they're pulling all the way through and it's onsite. It's not on the street, it's onsite. So if I'm, John, am I reading this correctly? There will be.
Yes, sir.
No deliveries. There'll be a delivery van that can go down the drive aisle, go down the street and turn down the drive aisle, but they will not park on Granada and unload. There'll be no unloading on Granada at all. Am I understanding that correct?
You are correct and that's how the project has been conditioned. We have a specific condition for.
So if there is a delivery truck coming down Granada, it's going to turn in down their drive aisle all the way and make the delivery onsite.
Yes, sir.
And then all vehicles that cannot make the turn into the drive aisle, so those would be the larger vehicles, must be delivered on Delmar. They are not permitted to make that delivery via Granada. It must be on Delmar.
Correct.
Okay. I think that solves the delivery issue. To me, the noise and then the parking, those are the three, the biggies. I think we've got deliveries. Noise. I'll save the worst for last. Let me ask you this. Is outdoor, is amplified music the same as live entertainment? Are those interchangeable or are they different?
They are different.
Okay. So by virtue of there's no mention of live entertainment, that's not permitted?
Correct.
Okay. So, good. Next is the hours of operation. I share Commissioner Crandall's concern. I want to be clear, every comment that I think most of us are going to make tonight, certainly I want to do it, is this is not personal opinion. This is, what is the code say we do, say we don't do? And we got, and we're trying to follow it. But code, there's a lot of different ways to look at it and then there's like the parking, you can either do this or you can do that. So we have to navigate and weed through all of that. So our code says no, has a lot of different places where we can limit the hours. So does, are we permitted to limit the hours to midnight across the board, wherever it says 2:00 AM and just move it to midnight?
Yes, it's conditionally permitted subject to the planning commission's decision.
Okay. And am I looking at this correct that as far as outdoor amplified sound, does it all have to cease and stop by 10:00 PM?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the 50 decibels, is that, is that what? Help me understand what, how loud this music is going to be. I've heard Mr. Sims say it's ambient music, they're not, we don't intend to, we don't want the neighbors to hear it. You only want the guests in the immediate area to hear it. How do we make, how do we ensure that?
So as a condition of approval, there's a system that would be installed with a limiter to the decibel level. That would be installed and then also verified to ensure that.
What would that be set at?
It would be set at that, whatever the allowed threshold would be.
What's allowed? Fifty.
Fifty for the outdoors.
I know, that's way too much.
So with that concern, what are our options?
You could, you could condition it to a lower level, you could not allow it at all, somewhere in between.
Okay.
What's an example of 50?
Yes.
It's in the staff report.
Send the staff report on the back page.
What is it? Loud music? I mean, loud, loud?
Soft radio music in apartment is like 46.
It's right here. You can take a look at it. Fifty, and this is the, I guess, the California noise, something or, I don't know what this is. John, do you know, you put this in our staff report? Can you tell us what this is?
Yeah, this is actually information provided by the applicant for the noise generated by the vehicle lifts.
Okay.
However, I think that just the general information about noise levels for just general other uses is beneficial in this case.
I would, yeah. I, the, it, I'm, I think it's been made very clear tonight that what we want to do is have a win for everybody and that's hard. We don't want to be kicking the can down for this to be, once it's built, be a sore spot for complaints and all of that. So we want to get it right. And how do we, so I would like my colleagues to be thinking about that 50 decibels and the staff as well so that we could get it right. Because we don't want the noise to spill. Now, just, I don't want to drone on, so I want to keep moving. The next thing is the lifts. They're, that, back to that exhibit that says that they are within our noise standard. Here's my concern about that. There is constant noise or noise that's within the standard and then there's event noise where you have kind of a, your normal neighborhood ambient sound and then all of a sudden, and then, you know, it's only for a little bit and then it stops. It's, that's, I'm just going to characterize that as events, event noise. And that event noise may be within the standard and we can say, well, it's within the standard, but it could still be really annoying and impact quality of life. How, somebody had mentioned soundproofing, I think we were, I read that in our staff report. Is soundproofing included in one of the conditions in where the lifts are?
It is.
I think it is, right?
Correct. The interior of the garage, the Granada garage is to be fitted with noise dampening material. However, the lifts themselves also have some noise dampening that can be, could be installed as well.
Okay. That's an option you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's something.
That one, the latter, the noise dampening to the actual lift itself is not included currently as a condition of approval.
Okay. So that, so the noise dampening within the walls where the lifts are operating will be no, sound dampened?
Correct.
Okay.
The opening would allow the sound to go through my house.
What about that, John? The, how do you see the, when you look at the plan and you look at how this is configured, how do you see the sound traveling when they're in operation in this, with this dampening? How do you see it working?
So vehicles enter into the garage and make a 90-degree turn to one side or the other. So is there a possibility that noise is going to escape or is noise going to escape?
But the opening is not facing the street.
Correct. It's facing.
Which way is it facing?
East. We'll call it towards, towards, in the direction of El Comino Real.
Did you discuss, are there ways to address the escape of that noise? I don't, I'm not sure how we can deal with that, but I would, I think I would challenge us to think about how we could address that now. Okay. I want to move on to parking. What, so here's my, this is my understanding of the situation. Our city code says you need 56 spaces. Does that include any parking allowances or any other things that we allow? That 56? Could that, is that 56 the max? Or do we have like parking vouchers? Do we have other code and allowed ways of reducing that number? I want to know what that number is.
To reduce it to?
Well, is that number including vouchers? Is it including credits or is it just straight up, right out of the code?
So that 56 is inclusive of waiver for 16 outdoor seats?
And that's, those 16 outdoor seats would generate how many required spots?
Four.
Four? Three?
Probably three.
Three, sorry.
So they're getting a credit of three?
One space per five seats.
So they're getting kind of, so is it correct to think they're getting, this 56 has three seats, three parking spots already baked in?
Correct.
That they're getting credit for?
Correct.
Okay. So, meaning it would be 59?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the city's giving them credit already, down to the 56. So our option is 56, we say it's 56 onsite or offsite, you've got to meet the requirement. Or we can accept the ULI study as a substitute standard. That's our, those are the parameters that we're working with.
That's what's proposed before you.
Okay. And it's our, it's the planning commission's decision which way to go.
Correct. It is discretionary.
Okay.
And there is one thing that you've kind of alluded to, but haven't pointed out. We do have the opportunity to provide additional waivers in the downtown parking zone.
Okay.
And we haven't reached our maximum yet in those. They opted on their own discretion not to apply for those. And we can have, I believe it's a maximum of 10 in the code. But if we wanted to say, okay, we can grant them five spaces, that all of a sudden puts them pretty close to compliance.
You mean, maybe move it down to 51?
Well, if they go to the 300, the 100 seats, this reduces by three, so it's really 53. And it would put them in the ballpark of like 48.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Something like that if we granted them some waivers. So we have that discretion.
Okay.
To manipulate their parking standard with, nod your head if you agree with that, Michael, that we do have that opportunity to consider.
Right. So, John, if we reduce the seats to 100, that 56 now goes to what number? 53?
Uh, no, it would go to 50. It would be a reduction.
It would be 50.
So one space per five seats, that'd be, yeah.
So by imposing a reduction of 30 seats in the restaurant now, our city code says not 56, but 50?
Yes, sir.
And then we have the option to recognize downtown waivers in addition to that, as Mr. Crandall said, so we could get it, that number, the city code number could be, and that's maybe something you can look at, Jonathan, what would that number look at? Because again, I want, I want us to be able to say, this is, we're following the city code. That's our, that's my objective at least. Because we also have, we can talk about the outlet mall and employee parking and get credit, give them credit for that. And maybe we can get them to within our standard. So if you guys would think about those, what you would comfortable on that waiver for the downtown that you've done before for other restaurants that were using a fair application of our code? While I ask Mr. Ponzen if he wouldn't mind coming up and I would like to talk to him and also you, John and Jonathan, about conditions of approval 7.12 and 7.13. These conditions is where we're requiring the applicant to. These conditions is where we're requiring the applicant to follow the parking management However, what I want, the elements of this that I want to get to, and we're doing, I want to talk to Zach, is the practical implication of what this infers, which is if city engineering, which is Mr. Ponzen's department, determines that the parking and drop-off pickup activities are negatively impacting or infecting the project site, adjacent properties, or the surrounding street network, the applicant shall meet with the city staff to propose solutions to address the verified issues. Depending on the solutions that may be required to the heritage cultural permit, discretionary permit, and conditional use permit, meaning we revisit the parking and we revisit what they're, what they're allowed to do. Talk to us about this, Mr. Ponzen. What does this mean? How does this work?
So Zach Ponzen, Public Works Department, Assistant City Engineer. We've been including this similar type of conditions on a lot of drop, pickup and drop-off type uses. All the drive-throughs recently have included it. Schools that have a drop-off have included it. We really haven't had, really to implement it too far yet, but the idea is if we start getting numerous complaints, that staff can go out and verify, that at that point, we approach the, the property owner and the develop, and the restaurateurs, that they need to come in and talk about the solutions that, we'll listen to what they think they need to do first, and then we'll opine on what they want to do and see if we can't come to some solutions.
Does this mean in effect that if we go through all of the parking science, but the reality is not what the science says it should be?
Right.
We can pull them back here and put changes to their permit?
Correct.
Okay. So those changes would, we could reduce their seats again or further? I'm just giving examples so I understand what this means. We could require them off, to do offsite parking? Those, all of those things are in our toolkit?
Correct.
Okay.
And sometimes on these conditions, we will list such examples of corrective measures may include, and I'm not, I'm trying to read it if we included those on here. It's just some of the things that we're letting the applicant know, that this could include coming back to the hearing. It could include offsite parking. It could include some of the other features. It's not limited to just these things, but if something else comes up or other ideas that we learn that work better, then we can start implementing really anything that works.
Okay, so what we have is our best effort tonight to get the compliance, and, but if reality is despite all those efforts, we're not, the neighbors, the neighbors are impacted, and they're bringing it to the city's attention, this condition keeps the applicant on the hook for actual performance, and we can hold them accountable and make adjustments after it's approved.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have questions for Zach while he's up here? Zach, you're always here, even though you're not asked to be, but you volunteer and you're here and it's late. Thank you, man.
Thank you. If I can just clarify one thing on the deliveries on Del Mar. It is often early morning, the big trucks are there. If you look at Google Street View right now, you actually see some larger trucks on Del Mar. And so that is the common practice for many of the restaurants. There are a few that have through frontage that maybe are still using the backstreet of Granada or the alley off of Cabrillo. But most part, those bigger trucks that are servicing the use are trying to use Del Mar, the big ones.
Yeah.
They are allowed to double park by code. They're just not allowed to sit there all day.
But you would agree with my previous characterization that all large deliveries, any, well, let me put it this, any delivery that cannot go fully down their drive aisle must be done on Del Mar.
For the services of the restaurant and the hotel, I would agree. If it's maybe a hotel guest who orders an Amazon, that's going to be very hard to do. I don't know what the.
Hopefully, that's not too often.
So that's going to be something different to where even the homeowners have those issues.
That's right.
Granada's a tough street.
They're looking for the major everyday linens, food, those kinds of things. I want the residents to hear loud and clear, those deliveries, if they're not done fully down that drive aisle, it's on Del Mar. Not there, not Granada.
And like Mr. Sim said, likely those residents will have video or cameras and stuff.
And.
Okay.
So we're used to seeing that type of complaints coming in.
I'm feeling, I'm feeling a lot of partnership tonight from the community.
I just want to bring up a thought, though. Is it, is it out of the question because of the possibility that these deliveries can disrupt that, the backstreet and as a compromise? Is it out of the question not just to have the deliveries delivered to the front, and then we solve the problem?
You mean all deliveries, period?
Yeah, because I don't think should compete with the customer.
You know, then you don't.
Parking, coming in and out of the traffic.
Yeah, then you don't have all these things that you have to, you know, back and forth and.
Linen trucks.
And blocking, why don't we just solve the problem now and, and avoid a situation in the future and just have them delivered in the front?
And maybe I can answer that, and Jonathan or John can maybe echo. We do have a newer zoning code that does require onsite deliveries in certain aspects of development. So I think we're trying to follow our code as much as possible and not utilize our streets. Because if we have everybody in the street, then the street is now impacted too.
But you're using a residential street for a delivery truck to come down.
I would just say that, just like an Amazon truck, but then they're going to turn down the drive aisle of the hotel on property, now it's off Granada.
What about the customers coming in and trying to get to the valley parking?
I just think it's a recipe for disaster.
It brings more traffic down Granada that isn't.
And it's a large project, why don't we just mitigate it now and have some foresight and, and just avoid it?
I mean, ultimately, that's in your purview as a decision-making body.
Yeah, I, I think we can have this discussion in discussion.
Okay.
Yeah. Zach, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions before we close the public hearing?
Just, just for Zach, and you might be able to answer it from there. What would be involved in getting, since they're closing off the drive aisle, making that a loading zone only?
Closing down the drive aisle, what do you mean?
Well, that, the, the way the drive aisle is onsite, it's a.
Oh, I'm talking about the one off of Del Mar. In other words, we're adding one space, which Michael pointed out, that we're providing one additional space.
If we did that, ultimately, I do not want to assign it to their specific, this property.
No, I wouldn't.
Because every restaurant, every business in town, every homeowner wants to customize their public space in front of their house, and I don't want to go down that path if possible. So if we did that, it would have to be open to all.
The businesses, right.
All the businesses could use it. Hard to enforce, because it's now becomes a yellow zone, and if somebody sits there too long unloading, I mean, what does that mean? So the enforcement kind of goes up a little bit, but it is something that we, we could consider ultimately. We aren't gaining one stall on that frontage.
Yeah, we are.
You asked the question earlier, how many stalls were on each frontage? I actually look at it as either eight or nine, because they're angled on Del Mar, and actually only two or three on Granada.
I think they become parallel in front of this site, don't they?
They're still angled on, on Del Mar, and so depending on where you measure from, there's eight full stalls plus a half an angled stall. And then on Granada, it's parallel parking, obviously adjacent to the curb, there's about two and a half cars on Granada.
Okay.
Yep.
Parallel starts at FedEx. Before I close the public hearing, Jonathan and John, any update on our, on this slide? We talked about the number going down to fifty because we're reducing the size, the seats in the restaurant from one-thirty to one-hundred. So now that fifty-six is fifty. What else within code that we've done before for other downtown businesses is available to the applicant? If we are using the city code column as our standard, not the ULI, well, is there any other waivers or anything else available to the applicant that, that they could avail themselves to under our city code?
Under the, so first of all, I do want to be clear that the city code allows for a parking study.
I understand that.
So I understand what you're saying, but just to be clear, that that, that is a, an allowance of the municipal code that's in effect. But understanding your question, specifically the chapter of off-street parking by use, the table, the table doesn't have exceptions to it, but it's followed by a couple of alternative measures. Those include shared parking. Those include off-site parking and parking waivers. The project that I mentioned earlier, Beachfire, and the cluster of businesses across the street at the corner of Ola Vista in Del Mar, received ten parking waivers. The other options, again, would be shared parking, which is typically onsite parking. That's a component of what's evaluated under the ULI study. It's a reduction based off of difference in peak demand. We regularly evaluate that for other businesses. And the final is off-site parking. The, that portion of the code for off-site parking requires a lot within one thousand feet, where we wouldn't have the same constraint for a hotel use because it is the only use within the San Clemente Municipal Code that allows for this type of consideration of reduction through a parking study.
I'll just jump in, since we've been talking about it. We could require all, not all employees, but a number of employees be handled with a shuttle. And then you can take them out of the calc, because basically then they're non-existent as far as developing the parking number onsite.
Yeah, or just give them, just credit that as spots.
Either or.
Yeah. Yeah, I think in discussion, I want to bring that up. I just want to make sure we're all satisfied.
I have one more.
Before we have discussion. Commissioner Camp?
Getting off of parking for a second. The roof deck. Let's talk about the decibel level. So on our chart here, we've got fifty, which is the code, I guess, the code requirement. It says it's roughly soft radio music in an apartment. So my experience is that it's the people and people talking that's at a much higher decibel level, yet we've been focusing on this amplified ambient music, which is really insignificant, I think. You know, my concern is, what, what is a decibel, typical decibel level for people talking in a, like a roof deck?
After they've been drinking.
Yeah, after, yeah, after drinking contributed. I think we're looking at, maybe not a noisy urban street, but certainly a school cafeteria with untreated surfaces. And that's up in the eighty-five decibel range. So with the rooftop being open till ten o'clock, as a, as a, you know, neighbor, I would be very concerned about that kind of noise more so than.
Ambient music.
Ambient music.
Yeah.
Or a fountain, which a fountain actually can be louder, it can be up in that sort of sixty, between sixty and seventy range. So I just think, I don't know if you guys can confirm that, that decibel level for, I mean, when I'm, when I'm at Nick's, I can't even talk.
Yeah.
A lot of times. It's so loud.
Yeah.
And it's indoors.
Yeah.
And certainly there's, you know, there's echoing, there's reverberating that's going on. But I think we should be concerned about a roof deck that's open till ten PM and the amount of noise that that's going to be generating. And consider, you know, we can get into discussion about that. But I think the ambient or the amplified music is really not the issue here. I think it's the noise of having people on a roof deck. And this is the only roof deck on Del Mar, yes?
It's, well, Rare Society has a second-floor outdoor dining area, so it's not a roof deck, but second-floor outdoor dining area. There are a number of residential roof decks in the area, but there's no commercial roof decks currently.
So I, I think we need to talk about that.
Okay.
That decibel rate would be if you're standing on the sidewalk, I guess, listening. If you're inside your house, it might not be as loud if your windows are closed.
Yeah, but your windows aren't closed in San Clemente. Well, maybe in them.
All right, I'm gonna, if we're good, staff, anything else you guys want to contribute at this point? Jonathan, any, any further comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open this, and turn to my colleagues and open up our discussion phase before we turn to a decision. So does anyone feel like they're comfortable leading us off with their thoughts? Commissioner McCann, I see you turning your mic on. Can I start with you?
Sure. And I don't necessarily want to lead off on all items. But relative to the parking, the, the code does allow for them to do parking study. And the, the parking consultants that were used, they're both fantastic. I don't know if LLG is as big, I don't think they are, but Kimley Horn is like a global traffic consultant. And they were, they peer-reviewed it. So who am I to question? If they say it's adequate, then who am I to question that it's not? And we're, they have along their frontage somewhere between ten and fourteen spaces that, you know, they're not getting credit for either. So, and there's, there's teeth in here in these conditions about if there's problems, they have to come back and fix it. So I don't see the parking as, as a problem. Deliveries, I'm, I'm, I could go either way. I'm supportive of Del Mar only. I'm supportive of the smaller ones coming in and doing it onsite. Either way is fine with me. Noise, I agree that the, you know, the people are louder than the music. And so maybe, maybe we close the rooftop deck at nine PM. That's kind of where I stand on those issues.
Thank you. Karen, you want to, do you feel ready? Thanks.
If we could, I could come to a compromise with the parking. If there was an agreeance to shuttle the employees offsite, then you wouldn't have the congestion that I foresee. I'm not a traffic expert, I'm just a community member, and I'm just imagining living there with parking on my street. That would bother me a great deal and to try to get in and out of my house with a hotel there. I'm supportive of the hotel, we need a hotel. So I'm just trying to make it work. I don't see why deliveries have to be done on a residential street. I think they should be done on, on the larger street that allows for larger trucks, and then the gentleman does not have to turn a truck away, because I think that that will cause issues. He can accept his deliveries and the business can operate. The noise, I agree. Even at my house, we have a somewhat of a rooftop area, and, you know, we get a little loud out there, but we're, you know, we're in a neighborhood, so we shut it down, because I can hear my neighbors, and I'm sure they can hear me. So I agree that, that people's laughter and having a good time could definitely cause a problem for the neighborhood that's right there. It is difficult when we're faced with a project in our city that isn't used to the size of the project. And it's very difficult, I think, for all my colleagues here to look at both sides and try to support a business coming in, a good business coming in, but also balance it with good neighbors that are right behind it. So imagine us sitting up here, trying to, to see both sides of this, what's best for, for us all, for the future, and try to predict the future. So I'm trying to compromise in a way that a little wind over here, a little wind over here, and then if something continues to go wrong, then the community is involved and the business is involved, and we fix it. But I see the deliveries as being a potential problem, and why don't we just address it now? Address the parking if we can compromise, and let's look at the noise, and I think And I think we could come to some sort of agreement. And I'm off my soapbox.
Okay. All right. Shall we just move on down?
Sure.
Do you feel like going next, then Gary, then Bart, and then I'll be the, at the end?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of good comments have been made up here. I tend to agree that I think, you know, the applicant is saying that they're willing to shuttle the employees. We've got to make that a condition.
Okay.
Even if it's two years, three years, whatever. That's kind of like the wild card as far as parking on the street. You know, I think the roof deck, you know, it needs to be closed, I think, more like Because of the potential noise, you know, that's, to me, that's a big deal. If I was a resident, the concern with, because we leave our windows open in San Clemente, even in the wintertime. So a roof deck, a roof deck is a nice amenity. I don't think we should, you know, eliminate it, but certainly limit it significantly. And I think 8:00, if not earlier. I mean, I go to bed early. But it's not about me, of course.
Apparently, it's sunset.
I think that this, you know, this is an issue with the noise, because on the roof deck, it's got no place to go, except out into the neighborhood. It's different inside, you know, inside a restaurant. I, I tend to agree with, you know, the thoughts that we should do the deliveries on Del Mar. I mean, that's where they're being done. The potential conflict with people coming into the garage, I think, is, is a problem. So I'm in agreement with that. I think, you know, the parking, parking is, if we have a successful business, which we want this to be, then parking is going to be tight. You know, that's, you know, downtowns that are successful, that are busy, that people want to be on, it's tough to find parking. I mean, that's true in any city. But I think if we, if we eliminate the employee parking, they've got enough waivers that they're pretty close anyway. We have stopgaps with the 7.12, which we hope never to have to use, but at least we have it, right? And we obviously have an active and interested community that's going to keep tabs on this thing. So, you know, I think, I think we're fine, as far as that goes. So other than those couple of items, I'm inclined to support the project.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
My caveat would be, deliveries need to be done on Del Mar. We're trying to predict the future of a project that may not be, you know, attempted for three to five years, so it's hard to try to specify the future. I think the conditional use permit allows both the parking conflicts and the noise conflicts to kind of be resolved if the project gets built. Because if it's too noisy, the public will complain and they're going to have to look at the CUP again. If the parking becomes too unbearable, the CUP allows it to come back and to, you know, effect some kind of a solution. So I don't want to be too, you know, what would you call it? You know, the
Ownerless.
Ownerless aunt or the one who wants to get into. I just think the deliveries is a biggie. Get all the commercial deliveries out, away from Granada, which is a partial residential street, and let the parking eventually, you know, in the three-to-five-year period when it might be built, let the noise and the parking get all situated by the CUP, because that's what happens in our neighborhood and we don't even have a CUP. If it's, if the kids are noisy next door, you know, I'll talk to their mom and dad the next day, and they will likewise, you know, do it if our dogs are too loud. So we kind of have a CUP working there. So I think the parking and the noise, at least in this, with the CUP sections that allow for a future date to come back and look at it, they self-regulate, because the neighbors will still be there to make sure it does work, without us having to be the, you know, little aunt that gets involved in every little
So, so are you, so
Deliveries on Del Mar.
Gotcha.
Let the CUP take care of
So these hours, these hours, you're saying?
They're fine with me.
Okay.
If, if it goes to 2:00 and it's really terrible, they're going to complain.
Yeah.
And then they'll bring it, you know, the CUP
Well, the 2:00 is only indoors. It's 10:00 is outdoors, so, okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Bart?
I'm all for limiting the restaurant to 100 seats.
Yep.
I think the hours of operation of the restaurant slash bar, not bar, whatever, should be the same as all other restaurants slash bars on Del Mar. I don't like it being open till 2:00, because that's not traditionally what Del Mar's about. We want to keep it safe. We don't want barflies, which I know they don't want to serve, but you never know who's going to operate this, this building. I'm all for employees being shuttled, so that's taken out of the parking, because I think they underestimated in their operations, there's no way that bar can function with one bartender. I mean, it's just not going to happen. I mean, you're going to be sitting there 15 minutes trying to get your drink if there's 100, 100 seats in the restaurant. So I think the employees being shuttled is going to be a pretty decent number.
And that's a good problem to have as a business, so you want them to grow
Oh, absolutely.
As far as employees.
I, because of what's happened in the past, et cetera, et cetera, I'm for no amplified music outside. We've had cases where TVs have been put out for the Super Bowl. They can get a special operating permit if they choose to see if they can get that. But they do get rowdy if there's things like that outside, and that reduces that possibility. Deliveries on Del Mar, absolutely. Both Del Mar and Granada are MU3 or 3.3 zones, where there could be additional second-story residences. And we've got to think in the long term that we don't want noise generating functions that are going to affect the ability to utilize a 3.3 zone adjacent to it or beyond it. And the local residents, I believe both sides of Granada are 3.3?
No.
Just one side?
One side. I'm not.
Yeah. Can you check that for me?
Yeah, I can look at that.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the, our community partners are correct.
Because
One side is 3.
We have what we call transition zones between one function and another. And we traditionally have been very careful about commercial backing up to residential. And we've got to do everything we can to protect the residential. If it's MU3, that's a little different. But, so I think, I think it's a little early for the upstairs deck, because the sun's still up for views and all at 8:00. I'm thinking more like a maximum of 10, maybe 9:00. But I think 8:00 is a little
A little early.
A little early for
8:00 is okay. I wake up at 4:00.
I'm beginning to do that more and more myself, but it's for another reason.
I'm taking it seriously.
And in the conditions of approval, there's a fee that we put in there, and I think I may have even indicated I was kind of in support of it, that they could pay into, to get their 30 seats back. And it would go towards the
Trolley.
The trolley. I don't think that's a big solution to solving the parking problem. I'd rather have, I'm not in complete agreement with that option. I'd much rather them use that money to shuttle the employees than have that. If they can say they're shuttling additional employees, rather than just kitchen-serving staff, that would be a way to get the 30 seats back. Or if they can find local parking that they can make an agreement with to get the 30 seat, seats back. And if all those are done, I think we've done our due diligence and could support it. Even if everything isn't done, because I'm not sure we can write all these conditions in one sitting. I think they're, they're not as simple as you would think. And I think the paragraphs on ambient noise of outdoor music is solved completely with doing what we've done on many other projects traditionally in town, and that's no outdoor amplified music or sound without a special events permit. And then I could make the findings based on professional evaluations of the parking, even though I personally may not agree with the numbers they used, inputted, that they've done it, and these other solutions will bring it closer to complete compliance. And they could, if for some reason they want to get their seats back and the parklets go away, at that time, we could relook at it and also possibly grant them some parking relief for getting those additional seats, since those parking spaces become more available on Del Mar.
Hey, Bart?
Yes?
The, you talk about the 30 seats, and I've heard multiple people talking about employee shuttles. But the way it's written right now is if they did the employee shuttle
They get their seats back.
They would get the 30 seats back. Just want to point that out.
I'm not agreeing with that. I'm saying they need to do that upfront.
Okay.
Yeah. That, that's my caveat for getting additional parking, to give four or five spaces in access to their parking study.
Okay.
But I'd say you got to do it right up front.
Okay. Well, for what it's worth, if, to me, if they do the shuttling, I'd be okay with 130 seats, but we'll see where we sort out.
Let me, let me ask you, the people who like the Del Mar delivery, do any of you see issues with traffic on Del Mar if we push all deliveries on Del Mar? The, through traffic on Del Mar?
Well, that has to be before 10:00 AM.
Before 10:00?
Mm-hmm.
So no issue?
I don't think so.
Okay.
What, what happens on the handful of days a year that Del Mar's closed?
Right.
Can they then go down Granada?
That's typical Sunday. So I don't know if they'd be getting deliveries anyway.
I don't know either.
They'd have to plan for, the business will have to plan for that. They'll have to take it, they'll have to take it another day. Okay. I was okay with deliveries on, coming down the drive aisle, not stopping on Granada, but going down the drive aisle. But if you guys want to do that, I can support that. I don't think we're, I don't think the seven of us will agree on which parking standard to apply. Some of us, I know I feel I want to apply the city code. Scott, I'm here and you, you are comfortable with the ULI. And, and I think there's a mix in between. Bart, I think you're more leaning towards the city code as well.
Actually, with the shuttled employees and all that, add six more stalls, say, all of a sudden, the shared parking estimates would work then.
I actually think under city code, if they're shuttling their employees and we reduce it by the 30, we're there. We're, or we're close.
We can decide that we're there.
Yeah, that's right.
Which is what we're supporting.
So in other words, I want
Say all the employees?
That's what we're saying. We're saying all employees will be shuttled. I'm, I'm saying that I want the public to understand, here's the thing. The Shade Hotel brought in an analogy that is not right. And I don't want, and I, and I think that, I understand why the consultant did it. It was, they're not trying to do anything underhanded. That's a, that happens all the time. It's the right thing to do. But, you know, my sense is the same as a residence, that there's no comparison. And so we're not Manhattan Beach. We're not close, you know, we're what, 45 minutes from John Wayne? I mean, it's a different deal. So I, I think that just kind of confuses people to think, oh my gosh, you know, this false comparison is what they're going by. I want to, I want to clear it up. No, rejecting that. I want to say that I believe using our city code, we can do this with the combination of reducing the restaurant by 30 seats, by asking the, develop the applicant to please shuttle their employees. And I, I really think, Mr. Sims, I'm going to look at you on this and talk to you for a minute. I really think this is an opportunity for you to show some leadership in the community, since you're going to be part of us. You're going to be joining the community. We, we need your help. We have a lot of employees that work in restaurants on Del Mar and park on Granada. It would be wonderful for the leadership from your, since you'll be the new big business on, on the street, to take the lead and reach out to your neighbors who are, have their, where their employees now are parking on Granada and say, I'm going to start a shuttle. It doesn't, it could be the outlet, it could be some other parking spot, I don't care where it is. It's offsite, and you get NICS and other restaurants who are currently, their employees are parking on residential streets to join you. Cost share it, make it viable, because critical mass can be achieved that way. And I think if you do that, that's going to be great leadership in the community. It's going to be a big service to the residents. And I think now we start looking at life getting better, not worse. So I would, that's what I'm, my appeal to you. And I would say this, if you're feeling maybe this is, we're being tough on you tonight, rather start off this way. You're built, you're in the ground, things are running and all the, and you, and now you come back and you say, you see, we were right on the parking. And you can demonstrate that. Maybe the conditions work where you, we can talk about giving you the 30 seats back, right? But let's start off being conservative, let's start off doing that and see how it goes. And then if it, if you're right and we're, we were overly conservative, we can, we can hear that too and adjust it. That's kind of what I want, the appeal I want to make to you tonight, sir, that I think as a new member of our community, that would be a really great thing to lead on with, is the off-site parking for employees, not just for your business, but the, we've got NICS, we've got Prime Restaurant, we've got Beachfire, there's a whole bunch that can join you and make it cost-effective and make it, get the critical mass to the point where it's not really a big burden on anybody, it's shared by all of you. So that would be my appeal there. And then I think we can do the, I think that mitigates it. The park, so that's the parking. The rooftop hours, I'm with Commissioner Crandall, I think, I think what I'd like to do is ask, I think, I think the surfaces that are going to, and I've talked to Mr. Luna about this, the surfaces that are on the rooftop will matter. If the surfaces are all hard and they're bouncing the sound and reflecting the sound, it's going to amplify the sound. And when you build the hotel, if you can look at softer surfaces that will bring that noise down, that will, I think, go a long way to not having complaints. And if you guys are willing to, and I know you guys are good, good for considering those ideas, I would be open to leaving that, that rooftop till 10:00, but I would like to see all, everything shut down by midnight, not the 2:00 AM, including the internal bar. The restaurant's closing at 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then midnight, Friday through Saturday. So I think that the interior bar, serving alcohol to just the guests, should also close at midnight. That's, as you say, Commissioner Crandall, that's consistent with how our existing businesses are operating. And I would like to see us remove that trolley, just remove that altogether. So that's, I think, are we close? Are we close to, are we close to a resolution here?
I think we're getting a lot closer.
Okay. Let's continue the discussion.
So do you, because I've heard So, do you, because I've heard a couple of people say 100 seats, what provision do they have to earn back the 30? Do you guys propose any burnout provisions for them?
Now, we said if they can find the additional parking off-site, that's one.
Okay. And we'll specify how many spaces that is that they need to find.
It's within 1,000 feet.
30 would be six spaces.
Six spaces, and it's essentially the FedEx spot next door, which there's some practical issues why, I think if it were as easy to do, it would have been done. But it's not easy to do because of the ownership situation of the FedEx lot. But hopefully, that will be cleared up before you open. And if they can secure the six spots over there, we could give them the 30 back.
With the six spots, let's just be specific here. Are we looking for certain hours? Because, you know, like a FedEx, for example, they're closed at what?
Seven.
Seven. So, like, they might not want to cough them up during the day. But in the evening, when the restaurant's busy, they might say, okay, fine.
That would work for me.
That's a possibility, and I don't know if Jonathan would agree that it's enforceable. But if they can find six spots, even if it's not in perpetuity, they could get maybe the 30 back as long as those are available. And once they're not available, those 30 seats go away again.
Okay. But we should be specific, like, so they're not, I think by perpetuity, well, there's a difference between 24/7 or peak hour for the restaurant.
Let me just jump in and try and make sense of this. The, I'm with Commissioner Crandall. I think if we could just do the peak hours from 7:00 PM on, that would work. The perpetuity really has to do with deed restrictions. The code recognizes the credit when there's a deed restriction on the lot, so that those parking spots can be recognized. We have an alternative method where, once the ownership issues with the FedEx lot gets squared away, which I hope would be before they open, and let's say Mr. Sims can strike a deal, the city could enter into a contract with that. And then the applicant reimburses the city, and then we don't need deed restrictions. And then it counts. And I've talked to Mr. Lightfoot about that. Would he be open to doing such an arrangement to accommodate the applicant? And he would. So, I think there's a very workable solution there.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Parklets as well.
What about them?
If those go away.
If they, if all the parklets on Del Mar go away, we gain 30 stall. I don't know how many were.
Well, that, to me, is kind of outside the scope of this conversation.
We really have to be specific about what they can do. I think we need to be specific about what they cannot do in this. And they'll bring options.
Yeah, we have, we have a, I'm just trying to respond to Scott.
In some ways, it's cleaner, how do you know what's going to happen in the future? The parking restrictions may change. Why don't you just have it that you want to reduce the 30 seats right now? Make a request later if you want to, and say shuttle.
Yeah, let me just...
Trying to predict exactly what you want them to do in 30 years.
Let me just jump in. It's already, everybody look at page nine of our resolution and look at condition under parking. It's in red. It's 4.15. I'll just read it out loud so the audience understands what we're talking about. The project shall be limited to 100 restaurant seats. The restaurant seating can be increased up to 130 if one of the following options is implemented. One, the applicant pays for multimodal. I'm going to recommend we strike that.
I'm agreeing.
Two, the restaurant seating can be increased by five seats per parking spot for off-site parking secured within 1,000-foot radius for guests and customers, i.e. the FedEx lot or others, if they should become available, or off-site employees' parking spaces that are not, and so, with the shuttle as well. So, there's, also, the city is able to enter into a private parking lot lease with the agreement of underutilized lots. So, it's already in here. It's just, it's already done.
Scratch one, and I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Scratch the one line.
That's all I'm trying to get us on the same page.
Can I ask another question? And I'm sorry to be Mr. difficult, but this thing's morphing and evolving. He's now conditioned to do valet, right? Completely?
100%.
Not conditioned, I mean, that's their proposal.
Okay. And we're not proposing, we're saying no deliveries on Granada. So, if it's valet, are there six other places that he can park cars that on-site now? Because you don't have to, you know, you don't have to let everybody go in and back out of their space all the time, because you have the keys. You can move cars around to get them.
That's part of the whole plan.
That is the parking management plan.
Well, the...
As it is now. That is exactly, you just described it.
That still has drive aisles and turnarounds and stuff. It has a T-turnaround at the back and...
It's just for deliveries.
Yeah.
But we're not doing deliveries there anymore.
You've just described, though, the parking management plan as already included in the conditions.
Just let it be.
Yes.
I don't think that's right, but that's fine.
I think Zach would be very nervous about blocking fire access, emergency access and all, if they're parking in the aisles.
I doubt that that's fire access. Those were two, one-way...
The only access they got from the rear.
But I think the fire truck does not plan on going down that street, that entrance.
Yeah, but they may have to, if there's an emergency.
I'm going to open up, just for the purpose of hearing Mr. Ponson.
I don't believe there's a set aside delivery stall. That's why there's the operational hours in the morning, that that stall would be underutilized from, you know, early morning till 10:00 AM. And so, there's one stall on there that they're counting for their parking stalls, and Mr. Luna can correct me if I'm wrong. But that's, it's just identified as also the commercial drop-off area on there. So, it's out of the drive aisle, it's out of those things. He would actually, that's why it's a small truck. It has to be able to fit in that back corner area. So, yeah.
What else do we need to work through here?
I think we should talk about the amplified music.
Okay.
I think if we're going to leave the deck open until 10:00, and we know that the decibel level is far higher for just having people up there, 50 decibel at the deck, that's like a radio. It's like a...
I understand that. No amplified music.
The city has a tradition of not doing even the downstairs patios with any amplified sound.
Without a permit.
It's no outdoor. That's typically what the city's done. What we're doing is matching it with the other...
That's right. We're being consistent with our code. I just think, John, I need your help. I'd like to find a logical place to insert a new condition where we, the applicant, and I don't want to say must, because I want to defer to Mr. Luna's expertise, but the applicant is encouraged to use noise, yeah, noise attenuating surfaces on the upper deck to minimize, you know, noise impact. So, if you can help me write that, insert that on here, I would, as a compromise, want to leave the deck open till 10:00 PM. And because in the summertime, it's not even dark till 8:00, 8:30. And I think, you know, that's an important part of the operation, so. And we're going to strike, so what we're going to, so what I'm understanding is on condition of approval, 7.9 amplified music, there is a table. We're going to strike the last row, which is rooftop deck amplified music. We're just going to strike that row that allows it to operate from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM or 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We're striking that. That's on page 14.
Yep. Also on the patio.
Where do you see that?
No, we're suggesting the same as all the other. Amplified music.
Oh, I was reading that, that that was just to designate the alcohol service on the patio.
I'm looking at 7.9.
Yeah.
That's under the amplified music section.
Okay.
So, the...
So, that's the second one down?
No, the fourth one.
I'm sorry, Bart. Oh, where it says lobby...
Lobby restaurant, indoor and outdoor.
Okay. Can I, Bart, can I get your support to just strike outdoor? And if they want to have music inside their restaurant, that's fine.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
And I think you've got the doors not closed when there's indoor.
Yeah.
So, the technical...
So, Mr. Sim, what we're talking about is just limiting the amplified noise to just the interior space. What else? What else? Team, what else do we have to do here? So, I guess I would, let me just go through the condition of approval real quick. I'm back to page 12. I'm sorry if I'm jumping around. But on the alcohol service, there's a table on page 12 and 13. It's a condition 7.4. I believe what I'd like to do is just modify the row where it says interior bar can operate and serve, have alcohol service to 2:00 AM and just make it till midnight. So, we're, and our justification for that is that is our consistent business operating model in the, on the Del Mar. So, it would be just...
Second one down on page 13.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Midnight. Back to the parking, just to wrap that up, I want to find that on, they're at page nine. I'll draw everyone's attention to condition 4.15. This is where we're putting a condition to limit the seats to 100, and how do they win them back? So, we're striking option one, which is paying a fee. Number two, I'd like to modify it where it's to say the restaurant seating can be increased by five seats per parking spots for off-site parking secured within 1,000-foot radius for guests and customers, period. That's it. That's where that one ends. It continues to say off-site employee transportation or similar subject to city plan or approval once lease is obtained. I want to strike that. Because what I think we're asking Mr. Sim to do is work with us by employing right out of the gate, the employee shuttle. That's what we're, and I'm encouraging him to expand, to go to all the neighbors and say, join with me, I'm doing this.
Yeah, that takes care of it.
That would, because that would meet the parking standard at that point. That's what we're asking.
No, we're not asking.
So, John, we need a condition for that. What's that?
I'm seeing we're not asking, we're telling them.
Yeah. We need a condition for that, John.
A separate condition, sorry, a separate condition with the requirement of the employee shuttle or shuttling of...
However you want to word it, I don't want to tell them how to do it. I just don't, I think what we're trying to say is employees need to be parked off-site.
I don't think we need to use the word shuttle. It's just off-site.
Off-site, however they want to do it.
Not on the street.
Yeah, yeah, not on the street, not in the neighborhood.
Well, we have to stay some sort of radius.
Well, they need to be...
Maybe that's a thousand-foot radius.
Yeah, in a proper parking lot, not, we want to use all 36 spots for guests of the hotel and the restaurant. That's what we're, and so, word it that way. Those are, and then, and the park, and the employees cannot park on the neighborhood streets, and they need to provide a designated parking location for them, or some, whatever you think is the right way to word it. But I think for me to look at this and interpret this and say, you're meeting our standard, we've got, we can, this 36 that they're providing on-site works for restaurant guests and hotel guests. It does not work if they have all their employees there too. They're just not meeting the standard. And then we need a, we need to update the condition of approval for the deliveries to reflect what my colleagues are asking for, that all deliveries be done on Del Mar. I'm not sure where that would be. I haven't found it. Can you help me with that one too?
It's one of the last few conditions, 7.18, 7.19 on page 16. 18.
I got it.
And 19.
Okay. So, all deliveries received by, off of Granada shall be received by the applicant on-site. So, I guess we're striking that one? Is that right? And deliveries, so we're going with 7.19, deliveries received by applicant/business along avenue to Del Mar shall be between the hours of 5:00 AM and 10:00 AM? Is that what we're going, does that accomplish that?
Well, in 7.19, it should say all deliveries will be made on Del Mar and shot between, be between the hours of 5:00 and 10:00 AM.
So, all deliveries shall be received by the business slash applicant along avenue to Del Mar? That's how I would word it. All deliveries shall be received by the, along avenue to Del Mar.
But we also have the hours.
And with the hours.
Between 2:00 and 10:00 AM.
Well, 5:00 AM, we're saying 5:00 AM and 10:00 AM. That's what this says. And deliveries during the hours of 5:00 AM to 7:00 AM are subject to the noise ordinance.
Yeah, so he's getting rid of 7.18.
So, the 18 is gone.
Modify 7.19.
And 7.19 is all deliveries shall be. That wording is added. Okay? So, let me ask you guys, if you feel that with all the input we heard from the residents tonight, that if we make these changes, this will...
We can make the findings.
We can make the findings, and it meets code. Yes, 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 yes. Okay. Now for the fun part.
Don't look at me.
Don't look at you. All right. I will try. Jonathan, are you tracking what we're doing? Are you, do you have any concerns?
I am taking notes.
Okay.
Just one point that I've tracked is that with the elimination of the amplified music outdoors would result in the elimination of condition of approval, 5.12 on page 11, which is related to the noise limiter, reducing the decibel. Just want to confirm that that would be removed as well.
So, yeah, I've got, that's on page 13. Oh, that's, we got it on the resolution too.
Yeah, it's in the resolution.
Page 11.
I'll make a motion. And the staff can make all the adjustments as necessary.
Mr. Luna, do you have something compelling to add to our discussion?
Thank you.
Since we're impacting you, let me open it up so that you can give us your feedback on our discussion.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you are giving us the opportunity to react to these conditions being placed upon us. Okay? So, there are two items, specifically, number one, to shuttle all of the employees to start our operation is a significant expense to start in the beginning phases of this operation. We don't even know how popular this restaurant is going to be. To incur this expense to start is a tremendous burden, and it's, and this has been imposed before we even know that there's a problem. So, it would seem to me perhaps there's some mechanism to analyze the possibility of maybe kicking this in. And I think we wrote a condition of approval. in our work with staff to say if this becomes necessary. And I, so I would point that out. I don't think that's going to be acceptable to my client to start off this way, and to incur this is a very significant expense.
Okay.
And secondly, NIX, for example, has speakers in the outdoor patio. They have speakers out there, plain soft music. Well, I...
Okay, okay, okay. Got it, I got it.
Okay, Mike, can I turn to you?
Thank you for hearing us out on this, and getting our opinion. Thank you.
So regarding the employee shuttle, everybody thinks of parking as an issue when it's the summertime and the peak period. There are 270 days of the year when weather or it's not busy, that there's ample parking on our property. There will be ample parking on our property. So the condition that we wrote in was, there's a financial incentive for us to do it if we're busy enough. That means we get the extra 30 seats. That would help us offset the cost of shuttling employees back and forth. Right out of the gate, it doesn't make sense for us.
Okay, you know, what, I'm struggling with how do we trigger it? I mean, I do understand the business, there is a ramp-up. When you open your doors, it takes time for people to discover you and all of that, and you're starting up. I can understand that, that, you know, maybe your first couple of months, you're not operating at capacity. You're not even near capacity. You're just getting going. And, you know, you're trying to figure out how you're operating, and it would be difficult. But once you're, how do we know what the threshold is when you're like up and running? How do we do that?
It's the 100 seats to 130 seats. That's where we saw that there was a good threshold. And if we, if we need those extra 30 seats because we are busy enough, we will by all means have that be an issue, an opportunity to off-site the employees. But until then, it's just an added cost. We've discussed this with staff every time one of these comes up, to have that financial burden right out of the gate is not, it's an operational, ongoing operational cost.
For me to be comfortable with that, I need to limit your seats more to get the number down, to rate, to fit the city code standard. If you're really saying, "Well, we're gonna, it's gonna be a while before we're really..." Okay, then let's limit it to 80 seats. And then, and then when you're at that level, that we have the conversation about shuttling the employees. I just feel like 100, I think, what is that, Bart? Four, three, what is, what was the standard? Three?
A seat per five.
Seat per five, right? So that's 20, yes, that's five seats. I mean, that's five spots.
I won't be able to agree to something tonight. I mean, every time we talk about something with staff, it takes days to financial analysis.
Yeah, the 30, I guess the 30, 30, the reduction of 30 is six spots, then.
Yeah, our compromise was to say, "If it doesn't work, we come back in front of you." That was, that's what we thought. That was, that was our compromise.
Five seats, or one car per five seats.
Right.
He brings up a great point about, you know, we're looking at the peak, like Friday, Saturday, Sunday in the summer.
Yes.
That's what we're looking at, but we're imposing a condition that's 365.
So...
Fingers crossed.
I'm just looking at our city standard here. We've got, we're down to, that's right, it's six spots. That's why we reduced it to 50. So then 50, another 44. That's a difference of eight. If we reduced it, if we reduced it, another six seats, that's another 30, I think we're within the range of our city's code.
My whole premise of supporting is that we're kind of in between the two. We're using theirs and ours. And they offered to shuttle a number of their employees, not all, but a number, correct? That was your offer?
Yeah, it was the five stalls that we worked out with the staff.
Okay, so those five stalls would be the equivalent of...
30 spots.
30 spots, which brings them...
30 seats.
30 seats. So those five stalls brings them pretty close. So it's about mid-range between the city standard and the L G parking.
From 130 to 100, or 100 to 70?
No, 100, 30 to, 130 to 100.
Okay.
If they're still willing to shuttle a few employees, because I really think your employee count is low. I don't think that bar can be serviced with one bartender. There's no back bar. There's nobody doing...
If we're busy, we both predict, that's when the city, that's when the employee shuttle would kick in. Right out of the gate, we don't anticipate that.
Are you saying when they're not up to full speed, they may be able to get by with one?
Well, I don't know if you can work a plan like that. I mean, everybody'd be asking for that. Hey, we're opening, and we only want to provide half the parking because we only think we're gonna be half-full.
We also want this project to be successful.
Why can't we just leave, why can't we just leave, let 712 and 713 establish the parking at this point?
To say the reduction of the 30 seats is adequate to meet the standard.
With that, and these two paragraphs for right now until it gets built seem adequate without trying to dictate minutia.
Why don't we do that, exactly what you're saying? And reserving the right to review it after one year and...
But that's what 713 does, if it doesn't work out.
Yep.
But in a year, it's not even going to be built.
Well, no, I mean a year of opening.
Well, but 713 and 712 both imply that.
Yeah.
Once it's open and working, if there's problems, they gotta come back to the city. If there's complaints, if there's problems, it's gotta come back. Instead of trying to sit here tonight and predict what's gonna happen in five to, you know, five years when we might require pay for parking and have a parking structure. That would be my motion.
Repeat that back, Gary.
Well, here would be my motion. I'm gonna make a motion to determine that the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section blah, 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 historical resources restoration, rehabilitation, infill development projects, and that no exceptions to the exemptions apply. And adopt resolution PC 24014 approving public hearing project 24262, Hotel Clemente and Loretta's, subject to attached conditions and approval with all deliveries made on Del Mar, with parking subject to the two CUP sections 712, 713. No outside, no outside, no outside amplified music without permit from the city, 10:00 p.m. closure of the rooftop, and no, and noise attenuating surfaces applied to the rooftop deck.
We've got, there's a few more things.
And business hours commensurate to other restaurants.
You mean the 10:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
Or the 12:00 midnight bar?
The 2:00 a.m. needs to move back to midnight.
And the 12:00 p.m. closure of bar activity.
We also need to strike under 4.5, that parking, the trolley. We don't want...
Strike 4.5, the trolley.
The, well, no, number one, section one.
What else? I think that's it.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Let me see if I can summarize it. You've moved the SEQA exemption, you've moved the resolution, and the conditions of approval with modifications. And I do believe I would like to amend your motion to give staff the latitude to reconcile the condition changes to the resolution because there are some things that need cleanup.
Okay, that's implied in the...
And, because there's linkages and we're not addressing the resolution.
That's for staff to do.
I know, I just want to make, implied in your motion. And that the modifications that you have cited, I'm just repeating this back so we can get it absolutely right. And John and Jonathan, you stop me if I've missed something. We're directing that all, all the deliveries be made on Del Mar. We are striking section one out of conditional of approval 4.15, which is the multimulti fee. We're striking that. We're, I believe we're striking, and we're also striking no amplified sound outdoors, so that would...
Except by permit.
Without a permit, okay.
10:00 p.m. rooftop closure.
And then on the...
That's already on there.
7.44, we're limiting alcohol service to midnight on the interior bar versus 2:00 a.m. On the amplified music, we're striking the rooftop, we're just striking the roof deck amplified music, and we're... Yeah, and we're, and I think we've already limited the interior bar to midnight, not 2:00 a.m. That's on that 7.9 chart. Okay.
Noise attenuating surfaces.
And then, and what we're saying about the deliveries is that we're striking condition of approval 7.18. We're striking that, and we're modifying condition of approval 7.19 to read, "All deliveries," and I'm inserting the words, "shall be," and then the rest proceeds, "received by the business along avenue to Del Mar." I believe that is your motion. Is that, whoever made the second, who made the second?
I seconded it.
Okay, is that your second as well?
Yes.
So you are addressing any of my concerns, any one or two of my concerns. I'm gonna have to put out with the music at 10 o'clock at night.
There is no exterior music.
And then the noise of the lift. Neither one of them, my concerns, has been addressed. Everything in favor of the applicant.
Mr. Alvarez?
This is not a question and answer.
I really appreciate you being here tonight. You've added a lot of good input tonight. Maybe after the staff can tell you how your concerns actually were addressed tonight? The music specifically has been eliminated, so maybe you didn't understand that. That's okay. It got eliminated completely. He does bring up a good point about the lifts, but the lifts...
Subject to the CUP.
It is subject, and it also has, sound dampening has been applied in there, so it's in there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have you, I'm just gonna ask you to talk to the staff after the hearing, and they'll walk through the concerns. I do believe they've been addressed. Thank you, sir. Okay, is there any more discussion on this from the commissioners?
Chair, just note one repeat condition from John.
I was gonna defer to you next, Jonathan. I want to make sure you're tracking all of this.
That we will go ahead and strike condition 5.12 as well that follows, since there will be no outdoor speakers. There will be no need to test those in advance.
You're talking about the limiters?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, right. There's not gonna be any outdoor sound, only indoor sound. We're saying that's fine. What's that, Karen?
Without a permit.
Right, without a permit. Okay, Jonathan, have you tracked, I've tried to repeat it back. I hope I was slow and you got it?
Yes, we're clear on the direction.
You got that? You, okay, our city attorney's nodding. We have everything? Yeah, there's been no substitute motion, so we have the motion made by Commissioner McCacken, or Vice Chair McCacken, and it's seconded by Commissioner McCann. As repeated multiple times, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's passed unanimously. And then the staff is available to answer questions from the audience out there. Should you have any, John, do you mind helping them understand what happened tonight? Try to do it as collaborative and as fair as possible.
And there is a 10-day appeal period...
Yeah.
To the city council.
I would like, for the benefit of the audience that has really dedicated themselves to this, one additional piece of information. Lesliea Meyerhofer, who is our coastal advisor, has secured from the California Coastal Commission a $1.5 million grant for a number of things that will benefit our coastal zone. One of them is about $250,000 allocated to a downtown San Clemente, i.e. where you guys live, on Del Mar and Granada parking study. The cities, look for the city to be conducting a scoping session on the parking session. Highly encourage you to participate in that scoping session. Jonathan, can you speak to that?
Yes, there was, so we have a draft RFP. We'll be working with a consultant on that for a period of about a year. We're looking to start by the end of this year, likely in October, running through about October, November next year.
Maybe we can put the RFP out for public comment and really put, publicize that on our website that it's available for public comment before we finalize it.
The first portion of that project will be community engagement. So before we dive into a study component, we'll do community engagement first, where they're both reviewing existing codes and plans that we have, and then at the same time, just hosting listening sessions. It's been a long time since we've done a process like this downtown, so that's gonna be a significant portion of the early period before. We'll then also go out and do counts, et cetera, of parking stock throughout the city, but we are gonna start early on with community engagement.
What this is, is an opportunity to like move the community conversation forward towards an actual solution downtown, and including the harder conversations about a structure or whatever we need to really do to be honest and get this problem solved. This is the facility, this is the way to do it. So, yes. Look, keep your eye on the city website. I hate to say it that way, but every, once a week, just try and pop on there. You'll be surprised what, all the good stuff you learn. Yes, thank you for your attendance. It makes a big difference. You made a difference tonight. Thank you. The staff will talk to you about all that stuff. Yeah, I can't engage on that any further tonight. We are gonna go on to our next agenda item. I don't know if Bill, Bill stuck with it or not, but we have one more public hearing that the staff is recommending we continue, and that is for project 24-127, the Ole Hansen Beach Club private events at 105 West Pico, Avenue to Pico. It's a conditional use permit. Staff is recommending we continue it, but we did get a speaker card from Bill Brooks. Bill, did you leave? Okay, sorry, Bill. We'll get you on the, we're gonna, we are gonna continue this until, Jonathan, when do you want this continued to? Are we canceling the fourth?
No, the fourth is not canceled, so I'm recommending that we continue to the fourth, and I'm optimistic that we will wrap up conversations by that point.
I will move that we continue this item until the next, to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission on September 4th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Fantastic. We are now at the end of our agenda. There is no new business. There is no old business. Jonathan, is there any staff report that you'd like to share?
I'll just repeat a couple points from the email correspondence that I sent to the Planning Commission. First, that there continues to be progress at the Miramar. The Lath is up, so Stucco should be the next step in that project. And moving even more quickly is the Providence buildout at the edge of the outlet property. They are expecting to get a TCO this week. That project is shell-building, so there's a separate permit for the interior work. So Providence is working on getting those permits through the city currently. So the outlets team did the building, but the interior will be a follow-up permit by the tenant themselves. And then the only other thing I wanted to make mention of is... And then, the only other thing I want to make mention of is, if any commissioners are interested, this is far off, so planning early, but March, the Planning Commissioners Academy, we'd love to get you a hotel room reserved, if you'd be interested in participating in that, so please let me know if you would, and we'll get you that registration.
March 2025 in Santa Rosa?
In Santa Rosa, correct.
Okay.
And then, finally, I know a few of you have come in to do the work to get your iPad set up. If you could coordinate from that email directly with Alexia, and she'll help you get that set up. And we're gonna be looking at starting electronic distribution of packets here in the next few meetings.
So, shouldn't we wait till we get our iPads to do that?
Well, so, she, we're gonna make sure that we have some cohesive software at the end of that process, too, so I still have to touch base with our IT team before we do a final distribution. But, yeah, long-term, those will be devices that do go home with you. It's different than how the council operates, so the council iPads are used primarily for voting. They don't really do a packet review and keep them with, with them, so it'll operate differently for you all. So, those will be devices that go home with you as soon as we get the setups finalized.
Yeah, the setup doesn't take long. If you have an Apple ID, it goes quickly, if you don't, it takes a little longer. Okay. Jonathan, thank you. I appreciate your email, it was quite good, it was quite helpful. Does anyone have any questions of Jonathan? Does any commissioner have any commissioner reports? Seeing none. Item B is administrative development permit reports, that's in our packet, I do review that. This week, I didn't see anything in there that all looked pretty routine. Just for everyone else's benefit, I do sit on a weekly DMT call, and nothing, there's nothing there that's extra special either, it's just the normal process, but I am representing our commission on those weekly calls. I'm open to a motion, where, when do you want us to adjourn to, Jonathan? Was it September 4th?
Yes, September 4th, and as of now, we don't have a study session, so I'd recommend that we adjourn to 5:00 p.m., and so, we'll commence that meeting as an adjourned regular meeting at 5:00 p.m., if the commission is open to that.
I'll go ahead and move that we adjourn this meeting of the Planning Commission to the next scheduled meeting, which is Wednesday, September 20, September 4th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. to be held here at the City of San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers. I'm gonna give the second to Steve Camp. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.